Thank you very much, Sister.
Inkomu, shenene.
Mara Batana, good morning.
Amisheweda, mwen na ngwele batiwale.
I'm not sure whether mina yo i agenda or i problem with you.
Anse di se kobe bina o na ngongo no ko u anse kareta niye nani.
Sesteti, a mina yo ngongo ne?
Eh, vara, a yo.
Let's check, is there anybody from the local municipality with us?
Inkombe la ku, u ti sa doko, har kona muno ku mela u makaita masala wala e na we.
Or do we have hoshi?
Kumbi.
From the area?
Na, yo na u osi ni u paketa we.
Or do we have the chaperoning of the older foreign?
Kumbi, shana mina ye na mtsamash tolo u a foran ya batiwale.
Okay, ukono ma, ye mu, sitala ma, we're ready to welcome us.
Inkombe la ma ni lunge kade shabu mita amke.
Mara, before ma we welcome us, we have to introduce ourselves to you.
Kambe la ku, mingasi amke la itara, aga mbi tivi san na eka muna.
Sela, si portfolio committee about social development?
Idena ere portfolio committee on social development.
Si hama na masocha ama vnotiye a social development portfolio committee eswadi sa secretary etwala kaya?
Ifamba eh, nka walo we u mula na masocha, la ma baka, baka nka wa wama zala na ba e na, la ba e wobe nra mina shi ma.
Si hama nti, eh, we call them ma interpreter?
Kasu, keda ifamba na nka wa waba toloki.
Ama social worker from the Tivatme talana o?
Keda ifamba ni, di social worker danza ulo ya social development.
But let me start by introducing myself to you, but buta.
Kambe itara, aga mbi tivi san mi na eka muna.
Oh, I'm told that let me, because in fact I'm being requested that I put the mic closer, eh, closer to the mouth. Now and then, both of us.
Ba ku yezun social development, the mic da e na e tsa neshe nene no mwen niye.
Uma, uzosal, uzoske, si amke la, she's going to welcome us here in the gathering, abe ready to welcome.
Eh, ma ni, takombe la mi lunge kade shabu mita koja kuli na amke la shifuma.
But before uma asa amke la, not to introduce, I want to tell you that today we zofela bitivi mina.
Eh, kambe kunamakari mtsakela ka ku tivi sayo, na de shabu na muna, me ga mellelega tivi.
So you must all at times smile and put lipstick and rolls if you do.
Kodane mika li, kuwa e refane mua ide, la u su kote, la u su yasoku la mido, mudi tola mida, la mida, msa seki.
Smile from the beginning of the meeting until the end of the meeting for the tivi.
Inkombe la mtsava mika mua ide, la u su kere, u su mule mika tregelega niye nani, a we a figure apo.
I think it would be your first time to be in the tivi.
Ne, shake, ne, shake de shabo, shunda kende ka ku u su mbo la mellelega tivi.
Okay, I want to, yeah, all right, myself am nomos, Muvana.
Emena nonkosi Muvana.
We are none e poloni, e iste ke.
Nze, uma de e poloni, e iste ke.
Next to Pink Star, eh.
Eh, da ule mka deka yo na yibatsa ma nena Pink Star.
Eh, inka yo, esko kela yo, indi prebi u kuti, de kokele ule committee si wiza social development portfolio committee.
Nshanga nuleyi, ni kela deka yo, mtsombe rile le shabu nze, amke la deka, sekretanke kata banayo, eh, social development.
Ama ye ama lugu, aba lueki ne yo e committee asa zisa uwa.
Shero, shemua na shabo tivi, shankoka shenene, na shon shida tivi.
Okay, I'm going to give over to you, one of the members introduce yourself.
Kodane jese eh, ba de olorita, kombe la mti tivi san na muna.
Good morning, mweni.
Eh, absheni.
My name is Paul Nitermari.
Eh, mene na eh, Paul Nitermari.
Paul Nitermari, yes.
Paul Nitermari.
Paul Nitermari, yes.
Inkomu, mwa eh.
I'm from Mangaroa, Blumforte.
Nze, ume ma, ngaroa me Blumforte.
In the Free State.
Eh, shi, eh, shi kuda bo shi Free State.
I want to say, um, good morning to all of you, you all look beautiful, and now, and now we can have beautiful day today.
Nsa amisheweda, msa seki le ngwe, nonge kaba kasi le ne ne na.
Eh, nimela?
Shewane.
Le inala ka ki jei mangani?
Emena jei malaani.
Ki tu akome ko ni butiri ma.
Ne, oma eh, u ko nebepeiri ma, not the worst.
Yere, ako pe la dea, muntshabi.
Eh.
No, oma ko pe la dea.
Dea, yes.
Eh, eh, lina, ya ga kisati ke tsa u situ?
Eh, vi do aga senzi, tivi sir.
Ki mungwe wa committee eh ya, ya tsa tsa katla tlenolwajo.
Eh, ne, uwa na washe tola, committee ya eh, social development, portfolio committee on social development.
Len na ke tsa kela, koba na li kilega ma katla nama.
Eh, na mene na ni, sa kela ku, am. Oy, kere, mukini ne na.
Rishi. Me fuki. Aw, na mene na ni fuki, ni loto ka na muna. Loga ni mukonsalese, na zaaka. Aku xota shwa, loga dokonza kimi, mlese kiba xola, uka gongu bua. Si mene na ni ka yuwa kwa la, niwa na wu.
I am one of you.
Ni charu e kwa la, at home.
I was born here, eh, at the area called Tomo.
Kasu, zangu shakiyan?
Eh, in the province, eh, in the district of Tyekean.
Niwa na waka mili angu.
Eh, I was born in eh, Bilangulu family.
Pa monye nba sewa, eh, de mi giva teke.
Eh, samwaga.
Eh, mara, e wu kanso kati, ni kansi kwa la, eh, aka Makabala.
Eh, I was married in Habani's family here in Kigla, Habani, oh, Kigla.
Ah, Makabala.
Yes.
The Mrs. Makabala.
Eh, Mrs. Makabala.
Eh, ni ketsan Bilangulu Makabala.
Ni ketsan.
Eh, I'm ketsan yedi gapo.
Makabala.
Makabala.
I love you very much. Mara, morning, nashu nitati. Ni uwa ni wa di membara ta committee ya, nza u loya, nsha isekuwa ma.
I'm one of the members of this eh, social development eh, department from committee.
Leshi ni ena ku ni bani za geko fna muna, loga ni mibona.
Eh, what makes me so happy to see you today?
Eku la ku, eku fuwa e na u, ni fuwa ma.
It's because when we say that our government, it's a government of the people.
Eku la ku, eita, eita tsa ma na we na, eita kashi bohosi we.
Eh, we mean that we sit down with you and we deliver and then take decisions along with you.
Ula ba ku leshi eeta ku, eku inau, uwa leshi kashi kenda shikamwe na mui.
Eh, we want that at the end, if we approve this deal, it's a deal that we, we work together to approve.
Si ni za e go fuku na muna, bita, women sa leshi kanga shona, ku ilongi isha, ula ku ya eeta e kise ina na u, e shkiba kuha i, la ba ka ina kaba ruko na, u osha shana.
So we are happy that this bill, if it gets approved, all of us, we would have contributed to it.
Morning ku la ku, nisa seke mo.
And another thing, you are beautiful, I love standing.
Nataki, nimera na, nimera na, leshi ya so, eh, sh, logo, aso ebeke, ando, mi la bela shle planishe, ne ne, ni, ni ya e shona munga, eh, de wey miga sasek, I love you so much, thank you.
And you are all beautiful and I love you so much.
San, bonani?
Eh, good morning.
Ni leli ka malan, still be the one, Mufanga.
Eh, I'm still be the Mufanga.
Utra moga, eh, Bungala, Babatene.
I'm from eh, Babatene in Bungala.
Na mi, we at well in committee on social development?
Eh, I'm from, I'm myself also, I'm from this eh, eh, social development committee.
And na muna shabi, na muna, se kentotisana na niye bo.
And I'm also happy to come here, together with you and.
We will again do the. I think I like that, and I'm going to go do it at home, yeah, I'll do it at home. Eh, let me also acknowledge and eh, request the department led by eh, Baba Ban, eh, what was it? Badi, by the I, yes, say to you, Bads, Bads, namaste, ma, Baba Badi.
I'd love.
Can you stand up with the department?
I'd love to acknowledge eh, the department led by Mr. Badi, may you please stand up together.
And way to wish you good, you can't stand up, are you happy from the department?
Eh, eh, kombe la, eh, amisheweda ba, inkomu.
Yeah, thank you very much, I'm also able to do the.
Aketsa, na mene na sena, kuwa ta kuwa mi mungwa.
We also together with the secretary yet, the one that is going to take all what we are saying here, and bring it to the people that were not present here, and take it to the parliament.
Emena, ifamba mwen na, ki kawa, kawa matzala, na la ba ka tza la, kuwa, ni uya koma, na la ba ka kipotangi, kipu, da logo e kere da ban.
Can we request them to wave to the people, older people, we were feeling it by the time, again, can wave.
Inkombe la mi, eh, niwa kusela ma, bo, ko, 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 kula shenini, lekso mule.
Okay, we also have a team of interpreters, can you wave please?
Nanka wa waba toloki, na eka amisheweda.
We are also protected back and forth here, we've got our protective team, abnabu to ozongu itala, can they wave to people?
Kasu, nanka walo ku, itse relela, kade ma bo. Kuna ume leshi kuwa na, la ba, e lenza, kuwa inkombe la na mwen na mi, kaksamwaga.
Thank you very much.
Inkomu.
Eh, I don't think I've left other people here, except to tell you that there are also social workers that, that they are coming here, and they also stand up, the social workers from this area.
Anse ya niwa, kambe lo, urna ni social worker, yiti ngakuwa la, emka geni, kombe la na bo, na ba ye ma, eh.
Waves to people, please. Thank you very much.
Inkomu.
Now, we have to move straight to the business of the day.
Kodane itara, na ba, inyele ma kenia, na, eh, e kisekela na muna.
I look for effect that you don't have the agenda with you?
Rishi, de shabo, a mina yo na agenda, kupe ngongo, ngongo, wa, na.
Mara, I was told that, la u ne speti, esku nuwa yo, u ne stonga, u ne stwale, u ne strosa, siya tetati na galu.
Kambe de wele, u ni shi yesi, u na shi tchikititonga, shi egi na eh, shisu, na shikosa, kambe, niye na, itavae, u la u la shikosa, la masu.
We are going to give over to mete you, akulu we de stwale sa kibo, wo, ba susuwele u kuti la, it's most of susu to that you are talking, and also other languages iske.
Takombe la ma, jei, ba bu la u la na i, na ba ta bu la bu la i, she, so to, eh, she, dui de shabo, shi twana, dui de shabo, na wele ku bu la buwa, she's so to.
Eh, but see, let me tell you the program on how it goes.
Kambe, kombe la ku, shamsela de shabo, ngongo no wa, na, uta from my job.
Let James is going to tell you the reason for us to be here.
Na, jei niwa ta, shamsela de shabo, kona uka i ni kere la.
Then after that, we will give over to the community that is a mandabatala, they are going to come up in the middle, and say what they think is left behind in terms of the bill, let's see, zele yo la ika.
Enza, eh, enza, okashelsho, eh, ku ta shamserewa, ku ta bu la, ku ta shamserewa, ni na u bi silo, de shabo, i komene i, ni ko bu bu, do u la bu la ka, mwen na batiwale.
Mara.
Enza, okashelsho, mi tara, ambuwa na mwen na batiwale, kodala e stare, ntsame stulu e ni, ni ni kipofula, ni shamsela shemua na, esha na, kundoan e di.
But ume is the chaperoning of the older persons for a hurry to welcome us so that they're able to, to, to take our tickets, and, and discuss and speak freely.
Kodane ma ni, la baba muka deka eh, eh, foran ya batiwale, ya genwa, na seva dunke, kirekota, ba amke la shinfuma, de shabo, i ka tsunjera, eh, ku tiwa de shabu se.
But if you've got a matter or an issue that you hear, you can run in front and talk about it.
Kambe, logo, urne ma, kade mibona kade shabo, mendi shikoti, kodala ma, shwe, ni ta u la bu la yo.
You have seen the secretary yet, you can go and talk to them, exciting.
Mingaya eche, o, mi ya u la bu la na, inka walo kuwa bama zala na, eh, mi kipofula eka.
If you are able to write something, you can even write to them and forward to them.
Kasu, logo, eh, shi bilelo, shi lefuma na, shon, ku ta mshitzala, ku ne, eh, bepe, u nga shitzale, u ba ni na, eh, batiwale.
And those that have been sent by organizations, the NTOs and the NPOs or N stakeholders, ba tuniwe tu kamie, ba nga savni ta irute, eh, savnishi, kola la, good afternoon.
Kasu, la baba, u mi weke ku baba email ba, mshanga, u ya di NPO, na di NTO, na bo na, de shvateke naxo, na ba nga tabata shi.
Bosan ngapami.
Sa kela bama zala.
Bosan ngapami ni da.
Ma na na munga, kani, kansi ya mi da la, kasi.
Ma, bosan ngapami, usamke e da etali.
Auksheni. Nimela, ralocha, ni machero. Good morning. Welcome to this important gathering. I say it is important because now, as elderly people who are now taken off board in whatever is done in this country, I hope you are listening because you won't go to come and stay. Because you are now taken on board, aso arisana, you said so, si ke bu jarali. Me amu ke ruwe, e kuwe, eh, inawa.
You are all welcome.
Wa popani, logo, eku mopani isha isha.
When you say mopani?
Isha, gemaspa le kitinga kona ya.
You're referring to the municipal.
Wane, Marulene, sukana mi, ma batawa na u anee.
Those from Marulene, may you please stand up.
Ma, ma, ma Halawu.
Those from Halawu, Rong, Haiti.
Aja, so, na ku itza kie. Wa Greta Zanyi, na mene na uma.
Greta Zanyi, and I'm one of them.
Ireka, eh, di Greta Diani.
And those from Greta Diani, please stand.
Greta Lichaba.
And Greta Lichaba as well.
Ah, ah, so, you can realize that you are all great, greater than any great, because what you do here, we have been waiting for this opportunity, that all these people are listening at me.
Yes, ne, bakonshabo ba, ba isering.
Ure, ekale, etsame.
There is a while.
Ate ku ta mweisa, e kuwe, muka.
Yes, welcome.
Komishani ke, u ku me karowu, la ku, inko, mogo.
I won't have enough time to say things.
Aka, u ku ita tsamaka ya, e fa ma, e kuwa, e kuwa, e kuwa.
You're not going to stay at home.
Si solo, eka minsera, si kuwa na muna, mta u kuwi.
And today, we are just welcoming you, won't say anything other than that.
Eku, mi ne na, awa mbiara, mwen ne, ekuwa.
Won't lose the.
Ni bela wa si ku nuwa, mala, la ku di a she, ekuwa. Me amu ke ruwe.
You are all welcome.
Fuwa e na u, eka kuwa, u na u.
Our government.
Ekuwa e usha, e isha na e na e.
As well in.
Ye, ni kile mati ba u.
And you.
Na e na e ku.
Give us power to express ourselves.
Ekuwa, aka me la u, le e na mola le.
Talking to the ears, so that when they are.
Na e na, we na ri.
Still, we all have contributed.
Me amu ke ruwe.
You are all welcome.
Go ku, go ku.
Especially.
Go ku, ba ke bu, la wa.
Especially all the.
La wa wa, suwa kan, na damu, utamu, romo, batale. Anso, likwishisi teka mu ka, ka wa selela, va sutu, va, eh, va ruwe du, eva tiwa kapuwa, ra, ra, ra inyalalala, and erinwa me ti mo. You can see, you can see.
Thank you.
Ute ku ma e na e la ri, na kensa ewa, ni ka u, inkombe u ku kensa, ekuwa, banana mu ku ruwa.
The winner of Man Joyce's demand. The winner of Man Joyce's demand, we go in front, sir. Na, chubala, eh, kiba kaya.
Ken na Man Joyce's demand, eh, ketsa ma, eh, chanalili, eh, baspala eh, eh, se chuanu ka, eh, voleroa bo.
Eh, negati vesa nana, eshin songo, secretary ruwa e na uwa mati, ma, songo.
Ne, ke, kasu, visha si, we sa, o ma le diwa, re na, ilo mati ba, songo.
Eh, ibona la ba, etsalela ku, e kuwa.
Ke bo na ba, o ba re wa, eh, alidu, o ba mu.
Ni na shama, le mu kuwa, ra, e ruwa, e ku ku, pe la wa, e sa ba ke ku.
Uh, this, uh, I think it actually belongs to the elderly people?
Nko.
All right, thank you.
Is there anyone had a microphone? No one. We don't have three mics, we only have two, because eh, community, the person also is speech, so we have to also interpret with a speech.
Uh, are there na the microphone jetaro, uh, na jeti?
Yeah, take that one, that's it.
Seko me jo re, ma interpret her we rabe, le osebele.
We want everyone to understand and hear what are we for, and also what we are going to say.
Me re, re, niya kabo re, ba tokamo ka, ba kuxishele, ba kaleo re le kje mo, le o re rabe, ki e se o, re kile osebole.
Siya boga.
Ra lebo.
Eh, I said we are going to give over to Mede. Eh, I said we are going to give over to Mede, she is going to tell us why are we here and also get into the gist of the bill, on what we have come for it.
Me re, ke rile riki le go ne la Mede, ma ra bo, go re, akone go re, go cha go re, re kjechimo, le go re rabe, are go che, di kaga re, cha mu, lau ka kanyo u, go re ka go se, umava mila eh eh.
Over to you, Mede.
Eh, ma ra bo kiala ba Mede.
If you have requested chair person.
Ka go kobe chi, eh, Murilastino.
La, kume neka kona, sa ma sturo.
I will elaborate more about eh what we are here for.
Ke tla, lano sa, bo re, ay kaba, ka go se, re kjechin, fe lofa.
Zeta lamsala, wo ke ente desa ku, llangani, wa lau ka ini, la.
The bill stick to amend the Elder Persons Act Number Thirty of twelve of two thousand and six.
Me re, mo lau ka kanyo, o niya ka go fetola, Elder Persons Act Number Thirty, ya two thousand and six.
Na ulo na mtele kuwa, usunu kesa shege, cha mume na ro, cha two thousand and six, ne shee na na ka, na ku se, kela kube, te ba ka tava, na tava, sa ba ku le ku ba tuari.
This eh act of two thousand and six to address its implementation of, eh, in, implementation challenges.
Me re, se, go ba go fetola, ba mo lau u, ne bo, ya wa ne kroka, na ra bo la, di kwe so, jeu di lemo, na ma ba pilu mo, ze niya chumi chori.
Shikogo mene ku, sha ba ktejiwa, na udu, bo lau ka ne so, na na min krofeo ka, le ka kona, eka na udu, se so, ka le pilu.
Eh, olawa na u, otave rabe, otale leza, tokomelo, le patisissi so, ya go se leza, manane o ama we asin, ke muu o, mo lau te u.
Now, uh, what this bill will also be doing is to ensure that, uh, there is address and also the inclusion of other eh. Manane would be programs, yes, are other programs that are not within this act.
Na kame shege, ne sha na wumbisi, eka na shikubota na muhla, pista ba shi na kuta desa ku, yusii, sumuani, sumuani ka re kiko na, eka na, usasu, suyesu, pandegusi, inge teriwa, ta ni, mina go no ko, le ifanle kuwa, inge so, wa lau.
Ya, mudi, ka muu se ni tokaka, unza mo lau u, ke ze ni lantela.
Now, the other parts that are actually needed within this bill are the following.
Si engede so, da beka, ka eka na wumbisi, lo, suyesu, fade, si inge tli, si inge teriwa, eka na zela ka.
Do go se neleza, kirom me lau ana, ya tokomese bisissi so, ya wa u.
Is to include the provisions that have to do with other taking care of elderly people.
Iku, ke te la shee, ne shu la la ka, himaka, ya ku katalela ba tuari.
Living place, o, ze ba thakana lezo.
And also to address the challenges that they encounter.
Ni ku, tuu sa mi krofeo ka, re le ba la kama ka na yo na.
Go re chwanete rabe, re se neleze tiro, ho ba na go re, eh, eh, hormente waruna, ho ba na horo hormente waruna, atse neleze, ho bonza buhoni, ba ba za di ba ruuna, ba ba kona udi ra, ka hundu da ba na ba bo na, ka eh, go re zan de.
Now, uh, and further to ensure that our government, uh, intervenes in assisting or helping our elderly people to teach our children about their history.
Na kame, ke na ku la kuwa desa ku, ka shee, ne shee, ku fane ku fu na ba tuari, eka te la ni, ba ka kota ka u, sa sa la yo na, ite lo, ra ku le, te la ba muani.
Lo go se neleza rabe, go re, muataka, ka na eh, ba zo fe ba ruuna, ba kona hundua ta takaza ma pilu.
And also to include, uh, the provision that our elders are given education about health.
Na kame, ku fane ku inge te lo, shee, ne shuani, ne shee, shi, lamsala ka, himaka desa ku, ba tuarwa ina, ba ka le ba tuari siwa, eka himaka ta re ayo.
Ba re rabe, ba se neleze go re, vi tokke ho, zamalueti, afarluha ni, abana leu na, are ipiche la, grana lo na, re le ba hood, akafe bisua ya, uka na, ba ka itokomela ya.
And, uh, it should also be included that, uh, whatever illnesses or ailments that they find themselves encountering in life as elderly people, as to how those ailments can be, uh, treated.
Na kame, ku fane ku la kuwa desa ku, eka ma ba, zila ba, ba tuarwa, niya ka na ona, la ma ya ka tsamene wa shele, ye desa ka, si, la ka, desa ku, ba go ta ku di laisa, kube, ba go ta ku di, eh, katalela, eka na ifanleke.
Ki ka mu, re chwanete, ri di ra go re, bo lau ana u, hara ze keleza go re, unne mu tuu, unne ke u go re, uhoni, lo go tokomena, the community based care centers, o go ra, adi di ra sen, te le ba zo fe ba ruuna.
Uh, which is the reason why, uh, when we actually, uh, ensure that this bill passes, it should be able to ensure that the community based centers are able to can, uh, help our elders to take care of themselves.
Na kame, shee, ne, olu, ne shee, shi, ne kube, shukemli, shi, la zela ka, shi la ku ba, na ka desa ku, eka ti da, ne ti, ti laisa la ka, wa, na ba ku, ku me, the community care based centers, ti kota ku, na tona, ti ba na shee ave, eka kuwa, amke la kube, kuwa, ba ba te, sa na kazi, na ba tuarwa ina.
Tupe ulo, ya, ma sa pa, adi caregivers, re chwanete in the aids neleze.
Now, uh, the training of, uh, the caregivers should be intensive.
Na kame, eh, fande, la, la kuta desa ku, chumunga no, ka ta ne teriwa, ne sa ku, la ba, ku ba, ona ba laisa ka ba tuari, na bo na ba fande ba ku manze, te lo, lo faneleke.
Ya ka, mo lau ana u, o chwanete udi ra go re, fa kunali mu zay, ka na mu hundu, o, o, lin klasa ha katalo, ya kikifetso, ki ba na, akone go re, akaze ba, ho ya wo bleke, eh, lin maleba, eh, si lo leze kile, wanke ha go zamaya di koto, we ya ku, muu ku jax.
Now, this bill should, uh, be able to ensure that whenever there is a parent or an elderly person who is, uh, being abused, that a particular elder person or parent should be able to can, uh, be accommodated into a place of care without her having to go through, uh, courts of law.
Na kame, na wumbisi lo, ulo ba, onge te la shee, ne shuani, ne shuani sa ku, lo go ku na bu tuarwa, ku ba tuarwa ka, la ba sha ni swaka, himaka ya, bu tuari ya lo ye, akota kuwa, atekiwa, ame kuwa, ina u ni, uwa, le se, unne ke, ke, hanke na kuwa, kube shana, aya, hensana le, hansi, akume na ku no, eka ti kodo.
Ra ba na ho lo ka unzi, ba zo fe, ba kikifetso, ma la ha ise, ra ba ni ba tu baba, ba kikifetza, ba tachela, mo pele ha court, or magistrate.
We have seen it in most cases, uh, whereby elderly people, uh, are being abused, but we have never seen those wrongdoers, those people who abuse them, appearing before courts of law.
Yusine mukile desa ku, una ba nbo ka, la ba sha ni sa ka ba tuarwa ina, kame, ba nwo na, ay sesha, ma eba bo na ba, omela, eba spene ka ubo, kube magistrate, da, iku ra kasi, eka na, sa ku ba, ba sha ni sa ba tuari.
Ha ise, ra ba ni rabe, mo lau u, oru na lo na u, o se neleze di ra go re, o talu, se ka za nelelo go re, hara re abuse, ka na yo na kikifetso, ya ba tu baba ho lo, re ra ya eh, ka go re, ha ise, o talu, ha me, eske sen, te, nimbo pele ha ba tu baba, di ra mo la.
Now, the law that we have, it seems as if actually are, it hasn't actually given an, eh, elaborate, uh, explanation as to what, uh, the abuse actually is. So we would like to see the abusers or the wrongdoers appearing before courts of law.
Na kame, na ulo, ba ku na so, si, a u bo xi, mu e ni desa ku, ka, le ka te, ku, ula wa, eku sha ni swaka ba tuari, eku la wa, eh, ye, me, e kuwa, na ma si meki, ba me lau ri, awa si, klanchi, wa si, ya ke, na ku, desa ku, ka, le ka te, in shuani, sha, amu lo u.
Re chwanete rabe, re ri ra go re, re, na la fa ze, ni tleke, za di koto, go re, di kono, o talu ha na, mo lau u, oru kuwa, ka u na, wa ba hundu.
We should further empower the clerks in the magistrate's court, so that they can get to understand what is it exactly, uh, when we are talking about the abuse of elderly persons.
Na kame, eh, fane la, eh, le te la, ba ma sala, na la ba ka kona, eka ti kodo, the magistrate, ku pre si sa, eku e ti desa ku, lo go, eku la ku la, eku sha ni swaka, wa, na ba ka ba tuari, eku la ku la, eh, de ka te ka.
Ra ba na ka di na go to to, che, wo di koto, ba tu baba, temu ke ba bulai, ka na ba tu baba, temu ba re in bilu, ba atse neleze, o mo register, eh, go re, hotela ku iti, eh, go re, ba tu baba, ke di rapistika, na ba tu baba, ke ba bulai, go re, eh, re sa se neleze, o, kona ku iti si go re, ba tu baba, ke ba ba kikifetza, ba hundu.
Now, we have seen it that in courts of law, people whom are regarded as rapists or murderers, they are, eh, put into a register of, eh, murderers and rapists. So why is it that the same thing is, uh, is not done whereby abusers of elderly persons are also, uh, put into such a register?
Yusine mukile desa ku, eka ti kodo, to ka, the magistrate, lo go, una ku ta, ku na, sha sha me lo ka, lo ku ba ka desa ku, wa, na wa kala, ba ka tawana, eba si, ni kelo, ba muani, ba ba na eba dai, kame, ay sesha, kuwa, pa ti la, ka, kube, sha sha me, lo ku ba ka desa ku, wa, na ba ka tawana, eku na, wa, na ba sha ni si, ba ba tuari, ay, krista so, kuwa lau ka ini.
Ka mu, eh, re chwanete, di ka te, so, ze re chwanete, so, ri di di ze, fa, opa no, eh, re le muu o na, ke, la, na la fa, za, go re, di lo, ze re ku lete, ka, to na, mo ku di, uze, za, kikifetso, di te te, di kono, o se neleze, di te te, di kono, ku fe di si, ka ma ba ka, la, la, te la.
Now, uh, that is the reason why we should ensure that, uh, the contribution that we are ma, going to make, uh, should be those that are going to be helpful and they be included into this bill.
Go da ne, la ka nuu ti si sa, desa ku, akone ne, ne si, uwa si sa, eka bulai, so na, ne si, akone, fane, ne si, itin shiwa kube, anti siwa, kame, ku na spangla, ne shu, na zela ka.
Mo lau ana, oru, ze ruu ka ka u, o tu di ra go re, ba hoodi ba ruuna, ho sa katala ze go re, ba, ba, ke ba hoodi ba ba na le, buhoni bo, buka na kan, ku iti kanela, ha me bile ya u na, ba tokomedi, weke, hormente waru, na katela, eh, ma liu.
Now, uh, this bill, uh, is going to ensure that our elders, regardless of the ailments or the situation of their health, they should be taken care of by our government.
Na kame, na wumbisi, lo, utati si sa, desa ku, ba tuarwa ina, eh, shika, u da ma ka, desa ku, shika, eka, varnas, pume lo so ka, ku ma ba si yo ka, ba kota, ba wa laisa siwa, u fu muu ina.
Hunali di lo, ze di muze, lezo na, re chwanete, ri di ra, mo lau ana u, o chwanete, udi ra, eh, ze go re, ministera, ka na, the traditional, za ruuna, the authority, za ruuna, di kona go re, di skeha, na le me lau ana, eh, le, eh, katala, ba hoodi ba ruuna, ya ka, ha ba zo fezi, ha ba zamaya, hunali, ulezi bo, bu di ra, go re, ka re, talu ha, ya u na, ya, ti me la, ba amnesia, eh, be re, ba tu baba, ki ba u.
Now, uh, this bill should ensure that our leaders, be it are the traditional leaders or, uh, other leaders, should ensure that our people are protected, our elderly people are protected, so that, uh, whenever they have, uh, ailments like amnesia or other ailments, uh, those people should not, uh, or it should not be alleged that they are witches.
Na kame, na wumbisi, lo, utati si sa, desa ku, ba ho lo, ze ba ina, wa rangi, la ba ka kona, ite lo, ra xi, kube, tuosi, na bo na, ba kota kuwa, ka na ka, o, sha sha, da, eka ku, fu na ba, na tu si sa, desa ku, lo go muu se, ba tuari, so, eka, ba na ba si yo ka, ya, kona le bo, amnesia, kuwa, go re, ba na ku, la, bim, eh, go da, do ka, ba xi, mo she, sho, anga fanu, ka te, go sa, muu, ma, sha, go re, ku ba tuari ya lo ye, eh, muu, anga noi, eshka, ka ba.
Mo lau ana u, rabe, o to ku di ra go re, buhoni, bo ba za di ba ruuna, ba ba na lo na, ba u, fiti se, se, o ba nem, ba, ba, ba ruuna, katela, eh, ma leba, eh, eh, ho la, ka ni, lo, ho, hormente, adi re bo, uka na, eh, go re, ki tu, eh, ba za di ba ruuna ba, ba na leu, ba eh, ba eh, se generatione, eh, we, eh, la, te la.
Now, this bill is going to ensure that, uh, whatever knowledge that our elderly people have, uh, they should be able to can pass such knowledge to the next generation.
Na kame, na wumbisi, lo, utati si sa, desa ku, ba tuarwa ina, ba tuarwa ina, mi to, koto, lo ba na, ona, ite lo, ra to mi, na u ti mi, ba kota kuwa, so, muzu sa la, eka, ba na ka kona, na, shu ku la, na shu ku la, kube, shu ku la, ne, na zela ka, eka na, ifanleke, ite lo, ba tuari si sa.
Etla ira, rabe, ho, ba hoodi ba ruuna, baske ba to la, ba antu mu di lu, ba la kona go re, huneli, bo ba itsinila, ni te, huneli, di la ba, ta be, lo, ni chi, eh, le bo na, ba ka kona u, itsinila, go re, te te, ba kona, hurupelu na, ta ta, ba ba na li, bu, buu lezi, bo na, go se, ti ku, le ti, ka, bo na, ba amnesia, ba se, re ku di, po ke lo, ka, muu na ku, wo ku ka kona.
The bill would also help, uh, to ensure that our elderly people, uh, do not have to sit at home, but they are provided with training facilities so that they can exercise out their bodies and also, eh, whenever they have, uh, illnesses, like the eh, uh, the illness that I have mentioned, being, eh, amnesia, um, they are able to can be, uh, accepted into hospitals.
Na kame, na wumbisi, lo, utati si sa, desa ku, ba tuarwa ina, awa sa me, eti ju ni, sa eh, na, kame, la kota ku ba ba hu ma, ma, eka kuti olori, eka, so, ni tango, yu, hamba na hamba, ka ruu ani, ba tu olola, ite lo, ra ni chi ni, kas ba muani, usu ni, ke, ba na ba si yo ka, la ba si, ula me ka, u na, ula amnesia, na ku ba, za pa, na, na ku ba, ku la, bim, yusine desa ku, na ne, sa, na desa ku, te ke, te ku la, ifo ku, ba ku niwa, ba iswa, eka, ba u omor, ba kota ku ku na, ku na, muu ku no, eshka, ka.
Ho sa katala ze go re, ti roe, eh, re fetza, ku ba ka yo, etla ke, di ra, ha to, eki bo na, ni ke, gi vas, ba tokomete, ka, fo, ta se, ha, li, tole, ni, cho cho, go re, sa ba si, di ra, mo, ma, hoodi, ba u, inesu, osu si, ma liu.
Now, uh, rega, regardless of whether, uh, what I'm talking about, will be, uh, provided by the caregivers themselves under the strict supervision of our officials.
Uh, shika, kada se, kube, shika, na ma ka, desa ku, si, wa, la ke, so, na, sa, in desa ku, ye, kube, sha na, shika, eka, ku le, sa ku, ti caregivers, kube, na ba, katala ka, ba tuarwa ina, ikuwa, na ba ka, tu, register, si, ne, kame, ba re, hansi, ta kuwa, ba me, kuet, iho, ku su, yusine, ne, ne, le, shi, ba, eka, si, lo, eka, na, ifanleke, lo go, ba, ka, katala, ba tuarwa ina.
Lo go talu sa, rabe, go re, eh, di, di abuse, se, ke eh, go re, di koto, za ruuna, di kona ku di siwa, go re, di te te, ba, ba hoodi, ba ruuna, ba pele, muu, ka na, we ya u, muu chi le, di ze.
And to further, uh, provide a definition of what an abuse is, so as to ensure that our elderly people get to live under the protection of the law.
Na kame, ne ku ti si sa, desa ku, ri, tole, re ke, o sha ni sa, eka ba, na ba ku le, ku ba tuari, na, ku la, eh, eka ti kodo, le, sa ku, ba tuarwa ina, ba ku na, ba ma ti, pi na, eku to mi, ba se, le, ki le, eka, ka, no, ba, u, niya, ku ba tuari, sa ku, na.
Ha, o fe le, leza, mo lau ana u, o tu di ra, go re, ba za di ba ruuna, ha ba le ku di pete, baske ba, uke ra, ba bo fi, weka, di ke, ta, le muu, au du, go te, ba, ba, ruana, mu tawu ha u, ba sa ruana, ili ka, ni, ta ta ya, bu hundu, nimile muu, eh, ba ta ifua, etla ke, ili ka, fo, ta, ze, ha, sa nelelo, eh, te leze.
Now, when this bill is passed, it would ensure that our elderly people, when they are admitted into hospitals, they do not, uh, remain chained under the allegations that they have lost their minds, whereas it is actually not so. Maybe they would be behaving in a particular manner because of their age. because of their age.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much, Medjen. And so, okay, thank you very much, Medjen, once more. And we understand that older people can't keep them for a long period in a home. Worst part of it is Saturday today. Tinasu petio na bo shuke la na bo hay plati, na matah bo yuva matizi and yongele iti ay traitis.
Re, walo le wae rabe, Medjen, kwa le reyawa e gosi. Me, re kushara pe, re kaseke rabe ya ba toufe bo le filonle, le ba kalele, ele, ele, kudu kudu kare, ele ore ibile ke mukibe lo. Odi moga mo, re, towa re swareke maluechi a fapani o, oso na le maluechi a marapo, maluechi a fapani o. You can see that you are not joining me. I'm just trying to show you. And now, I'm going to ask you, re, ba ni la ba kolo, and now, I'm going to ask you, re, ba ni la ba kolo, and now, I'm going to ask you, re, ba ni la ba kolo, and now, I'm going to ask you, re, ba ni la ba kolo, and now, I'm going to ask you, re, ba ni la ba kolo, and now, I'm going to ask you, re, ba ni la ba kolo, and now, I'm going to ask you, re, ba ni la ba kolo, and now, I'm going to ask you, re, ba ni la ba kolo, and now, I'm going to ask you, re, ba ni la ba kolo, and now, I'm going to ask you, re, ba ni la ba kolo, and now, I'm going to ask you, re, ba ni la ba kolo, and now, I'm going to ask you, re, ba ni la ba kolo, and now, I'm going to ask you, re, ba ni la ba kolo, and now, I'm going to ask you, re, ba ni la ba kolo, and now, I'm going to ask you, re, ba ni la ba kolo, and now, I'm going to ask you, re, ba ni la ba kolo, and now, I'm going to ask you, re, ba ni la ba kolo, and now, I'm going to ask you, re, ba ni la ba kolo, and now, I'm going to ask you, re, ba ni la ba kolo, and now, I'm going to ask you, re, ba ni la ba kolo, and now, I'm going to ask you, re, ba ni la ba kolo, and now, I'm going to ask you, re, ba ni la ba kolo,
But I can see that you have forgotten to smile always.
Where are you from? Thank you.
Now, God, we cannot leave the hall without getting yourselves telling us what is it that is left behind in terms of this bill?
So we are going to give Abad Abadala to come in the middle
and they must tell us whether they approve this about this bill or they don't approve it.
You are there. Re, toya kabo le fas ba kasa, le sana se chabor ay kaba, le tumela na, le muna kaka no, omo ba kala le tumela le lo. You can't do that. Ah, you're far from the right way. And that's it, ma, bo ne, ya bo le sana, me tingo anjani na umbe si lo. So let's just talk about that. And we need to come here, wa le sana, me yuva bo le bo le kuti profula, kubala le sana, shana, ma fumela na 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 ro, kobe ma o seketele, kobe amfumela na wo.
Yeah, let me not use the parliamentary language by saying approve, but we need to use say support a big or a support a big.
You are there. Er, kiske ka, berikisha, polelo ya kua parliamente ya wo re ay approve. Le na le robo jor ay kaba la, cheha, kuba kalo, chehi, mula kaka no. And now, you want to say, eh, re mira ina, wa le parliamente ra kumpasi sa kuba approve, do, la ba kua nugu, ma seketele, kobe ma o seketele.
But at first, when you are here in the podium or in the mic, you must also introduce yourself. Tell us where you come from.
You are, eh, sama tomo, se we itao to ye ma mo eh, microphone no, bo bo lela. Oso ne, toto me kabo robo jor kwe na ma, lewa na uchwa kai. Now, I'm saying to you, re, ba ni la ba kolo, and now, I'm saying to you, re, ba ni la ba kolo, and now, I'm saying to you, re, ba ni la ba kolo, and now, I'm saying to you, re, ba ni la ba kolo, and now, I'm saying to you, re, ba ni la ba kolo, and now, I'm saying to you, re, ba ni la ba kolo, and now, I'm saying to you, re, ba ni la ba kolo, and now, I'm saying to you, re, ba ni la ba kolo, and now, I'm saying to you, re, ba ni la ba kolo, and now, I'm saying to you, re, ba ni la ba kolo, and now, I'm saying to you, re, ba ni la ba kolo, and now, I'm saying to you, re, ba ni la ba kolo, and now, I'm saying to you, re, ba ni la ba kolo, and now, I'm saying to you, re, ba ni la ba kolo, and now, I'm saying to you, re, ba ni la ba kolo, and now, I'm saying to you, re, ba ni la ba kolo,
The ones that, that is the secretariat, the table, the secretariat.
You can't do that. 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 You can't do that.
Those that are abused by their grand, their parent, in fact, their kids, they must also report it to the social workers and they must leave their addresses so that we are able to make a follow up.
You are, ba ore le wo re, ba tlaishwa ke ba na, kuba di tloko lo jabo na, ba so ne chi ba bi re mola wo di social worker, you may ba shee rabe di nomoro jabo na, jafuka ka, kuba ba chele chona cha di social worker. You can't do that. 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 You can't do that.
They must also go to the police station and report to the police so that the kids or the grand be taken to tea at the end of the day.
Ba so ne chi ba wo e rabe, ba e ma polise, ba e wo bi ra ma ba bi, le ba tlaishwa wo kabo na, wo re ba na ba bo na, kuba di tloko lo jabo na, che di ba tlaishaw, di xone koli ba na le mala. Now, I'm saying to you, re, ba ni la ba kolo, wa le sana, ba ni la ba kolo, wa le sana, ba ni la ba kolo, wa fa ne le ba eka shkorisa, kobe, eka shkorisa, ba ya profula na, zo ba mangala mundoi, loye aba shanisa, ka, nga, ba bo muna kobe tuu, le sana, bo nia loye aba kana pe, fa ne re wa e khotwi.
Now, I'm giving an opportunity to the elderly person to come in front. Can we see them by the show of hands so that si ba si lapa in the middle?
You are there. Re, la fa li na, eh, ba tuwa ba rolo, muniye, la wa wo re le, 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 chesele, lo ma fa si. Le, re, buje, se wali nia kabo robo jasona. You are there. Kabo la, ne, mi she mazoro, kuba, 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 kuba. Ba juar wa ina, so si kar ba wo ne le sana, le kuba, 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 kuba.
Okay, we are still on this side, not on the other one. So, si ngaza la, kuba ba no. Baba, blangeleke ma. Mama, olda person, che person, wo zala in the middle?
You can't do that. You can't do that.
Si se se la, wo za ma, we must, yes, yes.
So I'm sure, ba ba kobe la le sana, le kuba, eh, te kache engre shi kaka shona, yimsa ma wo, angatiteli, si na na kasa ma, ah, ah, ah.
Ma, kaka mesa isanla, wo za ma kana.
Ma, wo, 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 wo.
And now, it's full, yeah? Let's stop the, si zo, yeah? No, ma, ma. Bo shalestulu eni ma ma, ntoligele ni betuna. Ma, have a seat, have a seat at the back. Betuna, sitoligele, ma basta lestulu. Si e kuwa. Akil kuseleke ma, just dole ne, ne? It's full, okay? Si zo zala, kule site.
Itatahla, eh, shine nele.
Asihame, wo e baba wo kaka.
Eh, kobe la kua, eh, so la ba muniye bapa.
And we'll give you in the next round, ne na baba butu. Baba, oyuwa, oyuwa.
Oyuwa, oyuwa, oyuwa. You can't do that.
Si zo, oyanga, nganga.
Eh, ita shala, eh, wo ya, eh, kama ina, hana, eh, shmati.
Let's agree, ke uki, eh, how many? Okay. Baba pe, kanga muwa, ete.
You can't do that. You can't do that.
Ma si teta oma, aba no, baba, si zo zanga. So get ready, ma beteti. But let's agree, uki, you are going to take three minutes only because if this side does tagai.
You can't do that. It's a decade, it's a decade, eh, nah, you can't do that. I said, eh, shmati. It's a couple of years ago, re, but you're but you're not afraid, but you're not afraid. Let's have a fair fight, let's have a fair fight. It's a couple of years ago, re, but you're but you're not afraid, but you're not afraid. Let's have a fair fight, let's have a fair fight. You're not afraid, you're not afraid. You're not afraid, you're not afraid. You're not afraid, you're not afraid.
Si spulisile, we na gene na juti, umbani kabani, and you are coming from this village.
You can't do that. Eh, you can't do that. You can't do that.
Interpretana, imike. Si si masu baba, si si masu baba. We are for, we are for, we are for, we are for.
Eh, ya, you may decide, but so I, so I'm nagin na ma la, si si, si si, si si, si si, si si. Eh, mula wa na, oh, ya, oh, 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 oh. Wura ove le horre na kulu tse kamu ba badi badi bari. Le baba lo ba kato olala, le baba chiye kano le we tse. Eh, luni medisa, kamuka napo n'aruba shumi, kamuka napo n'aruba di.
Agreed you all, all of you who are there, eh, the members of the committee.
Nino laga kina se de malaji.
I am Malaji.
I'm from Rovedi Ralela.
I hear that there's an invitation for you eh from you to, for us to come here so that you can assist us, those who are really struggling from our homes. Without really being long, I would like to be short because I know there's a lot of people who are supposed to be speaking here. I was just saying I do support this bill because this will assist us to work eh together nicely at home, from us as parents, our grandchildren, and also our children. Let it be approved. Thank you. Let me eh greetings, let me greet the community as a whole. Guys, can somebody adjust the mic for us, please? Johannis Mama Lara from eh Greater Pian. Eh, I do have some concerns. I can see that the laws are already there, established. We speak about the Bill of Rights of the elderly people.
Well, let me say that I attended training in twenty seventeen eh to go and learn about what I'm speaking of. Now, I'd be very pleased if the government can follow up on this and take care of the elderly people. Because our elderly people are actually suffering. Let me give an example eh by when they go to their eh pension pay point. Now, they walk for long distances to their pay points. And what actually makes us to suffer even more is that the other pay points have been closed. We would be very happy if they can open other pay points so that the elderly people can receive their grants at eh places nearer to them. Because according to the law, an elderly person mustn't walk for more than five kilometers to can receive their grants.
Mama Lara Johannis.
My name is Mama Lara Johannis. Now, we would like these laws to be implemented. And we would be very happy if those who abuse our elderly eh people get to be sentenced for a very long time. Now, we would also eh like the hospitals to take care of our elderly people because they are suffering when they are at eh the hospitals. So we would like them to be taken care of. I'd be very grateful if, I'd be very grateful if the government takes this matter seriously. In fact, there is a lot that I was going to say, but because of time, I cannot go on. I thank you.
My name is eh Eli Baloi. Eh, I'm from Omamitwa Randmit. I'm here to support all the laws that have been read. More specifically, more specifically eh that part which speak about the eh the abuse of the elderly people. It is true that it is written on paper, but most of the elderly people, we are not even aware that we are being abused. I would really eh like to ask you, if possible, to speak to eh your colleagues eh specifically a social worker. Help them, please, if it's possible. They need to come us to us, excuse me, to us in our homes so that they can assist us or conscientize us on what is meant by being abused because we use from our own homes. Sometimes one of the neighbors will give a hint to the social worker about what is happening in a certain home. But when a social worker goes there, then there will be the discussion. Then that person will say, listen, I, I don't know, I, I'm not sure if I'm being perhaps abused if this is what is happening in my home. Heads, I'm saying please, by all means, if possible, can a social worker come to us close? Help us to understand this and so that we can get help.
Susimask baba. And smile for the TV, sus altogether. Take it away. Now I can see your smile.
Eh, xamso ngola di Elas Mafiega. I'm Elas Mafiega. From Parabura. Eh, no uma eh Parabura. Et Majenje. Et Majenje. I'm here to thank the doctor that helped me and the social worker as well. At the hospital at Litava. Where my eh hypertension was very high for a duration of three months, it was at hundred. I want to also mention that when I was at the hospital in Litava, in that three months duration, things were not really well on my side. My blood pressure was very high. They tried different means to assist me, the doctor specifically, but they brought in eh the social worker. So what has helped me, they introduced an exercise which is a gym. So during that gym, that's when I realized the better mistake is temperature going down. So he wants to encourage all the elderly people who are here that please, not only the medication that is of assistance, but also the exercise is very vital in controlling your blood pressure. Today, I can stand on one leg. I am now in a better position because of this gym. I do, I do support the bill fully. This is what really is very important to us because it has, does also help us in terms of health. Perhaps if it wasn't because of these laws that are there, I wouldn't be able to be helped. But today I am alive and thank you to God.
Eh, Tovella.
Greetings. Eh, radon medisa batukamuka, baruku oka numu. I greet everyone come out here. My name is Ishmael Munyela. I'm from Ralela. What aid greater than any municipality? What aid greater than any municipality? And secondly, I would like to indicate that I support this bill. I support it with two to three additions. Addition nyama tomo, tukwao section seven. The third addition would be section seven. Eh, ewanala kavaya protection against ewancha the violent sexual abuse, physical abuse, kweke inaka opobela rewe tetele kavaya verbal and emotional abuse. Now, it talks about eh. Section seven A. Section seven A, it talks about eh sexual abuse, violence abuse. So I wanted to eh to eh further include verbal or emotional abuse. Because eh this abuse that I have mentioned, they also contribute to the eh the rise of our sugar diabetes level whenever we are encountering them. The second issue is about the abuses that we encounter at eh the public offices. Sir, notary abuse, provision of services in public offices. I would appreciate it that eh at the public service eh offices, there be a queue specially dedicated for elderly people. So that when we go there, we should not be in the same queue with other people. Because we end up staying for long in those offices. And in the process, our ailments then eh deteriorate. The other issue is about pension payouts. Now. Eh, there is an issue of postponements whenever we are supposed to receive our social grants. We would be first, eh be told that we are going to receive the social grant on the third of the month. We would then wake up and go to the pay point and queue the whole day. And at around four in the afternoon, then be told that no, eh we are no longer going to receive our grants on the day. It has been postponed to the seventh day of the month. On that seventh day of the month, we go and queue again at the pay point. Only to be told later on the day that no, we are no longer going to receive our funds again. The payday has been postponed to now the ninth of the month. And at that time, we do not even have food to eat eh at home. So we are requesting that such postponements should not be eh allowed or they shouldn't happen anymore. Now, we are asking that the pay points should be eh proper eh buildings or infrastructures in eh or because even though they provide us with chairs, but we get to queue for the whole day in the sun. And that actually makes our ailments to be worse. The last one is eh the issue relating to sports and recreation. I heard that eh there's supposed to be equipment for exercising our bodies. Now eh we were asking, we were asking that eh such exercise eh equipment be provided. It shouldn't be just eh promises that are not going to be carried out. Because in the villages, when we have to exercise, we go to the field, the sports field. But you find that we do not have the proper goalposts or even the footballs. So we are asking that such a promise eh be, or it should actually materialize. And the other thing is that when we attend such government eh meetings, we be provided with food and water. Because in other meetings, we would only be given water or there wouldn't be food at all. And such things deteriorates our ailments, I think. Greetings to everyone. My name is Valery Sivola from Thominli Hamujachi. Under the Greater Zanin Municipality. We have heard about the bill. It shouldn't just be a bill that is being spoken about, but eh but not materializing. We are requesting that this law should work for us as you are promising. As elderly people, we are happy that the law is taking us seriously and it is aware of us. Eh, but ourselves as people from the villages, we have challenges, especially when it comes to eh things like hospitals. Now, at our clinics, we go there and stay for the whole day until the afternoon, only to be told that your medication hasn't arrived. You then have to go back home while eh your illness has intensified. We have nothing. We are only facing challenges at our centers. We have to see it upon ourselves to ensure that we do everything for ourselves. We would eh like of a government to take care of us, especially when it comes to eh this eh attendance to clinics. We should not be in the same queue as other eh people. Because you find that we are on the same queue with pregnant eh women, the youth, and other people. So we get to spend the whole day eh at the hos- hospitals or clinics. Now, I would like, I would like eh law to indicate that it is actually taking care of us, it is aware of us and eh so that we can continue on living, we shouldn't live our lives before time. I thank you. Eh, I would like to eh welcome you and greet you. Eh, you said earlier that we are beautiful. I'm also saying the same to you. You look stunning. Eh, we, I would like to also thank our government for taking care of us. Eh, what you said here, we wish it could be eh fulfilled.
I live at Madmelle di Yode. Seshu ka atani. Ya mushawa ina ikenza, lo komi ite ke na kso kui. Lo komi pa e, uwa ke gulu tetan, mita mita iko mangai sa kwa. Minga niyenu ko bangoba ke gulu na kufamba awashko. Minga niye, niu komanga, ke guru na gufamba awashko. Mogutana, uwa ke guru, mitati, inisela, la re she la, uwe be la, ite be.
Eh, I would like to thank our government for taking us serious. You invited us here, although some of us can walk, but you made all the provisions for us to come here to speak with you.
Hmm, se, au kombe la, um, musho le suwi, de la ksona, uwi, enke. I kela, i kensa, na logo mi, enkele, ti sentara, tawa ke.
Eh, I would like to thank the government for, eh, taking care of us and especially for providing, eh, centers for the elderly.
Eh, la ti sentare, ni, bela, i komabi, to mi kua, exercise, sa re, ngapona li. Ma ba, ya machugale, yate, ai bulate, ayay, ingele.
Eh, I would love to thank the arrangement of, eh, elderly centers for elderly people because they are helping us to improve our health. Illments such as high blood pressure now can be avoided.
Senge, shishigabona, manu kombe la, ti sentara, ta wena, mi te fa uwa, diwa, tuwa ne, ai fa uwa.
Eh, another thing that I would love to ask is that may you please, eh, make a provision of funding all the centers because some of them are not funded.
Logo, muro bukuna suwali, le si, lasu kote, uku si, enke, le si, misi, lavabo. Ie, tanu, muni, mela, wa, bata bata, i komba, i, enke, le si, misi, lavabu, fa uwa, uwa.
Eh, if we, maybe because of not, eh, having enough knowledge, we lag on filling all the requirements needed to be funded, may you please send someone to come and assist us to reach that.
Sesu, singeteta ina, sentara ya ina, isku, munabu, ra, itu, enke, lebe. Until now, I found.
Eh, for example, our center, I believe maybe in her area, Madumeleni, there is a center, but it's not funded although it started, eh, operating around twenty left.
Se, eh, ba ke guru, ba manu, otala, na ba karabre, ba manu, ba kelela, nza, buku, ba, manu, munkar, ruo, nele, kumbi, ni kisha, kuda, manu, munkar, ba ba, bangana.
Eh, because of our center, am I saying, our center not being funded, some elderly people have stopped coming to the centers because we don't get the provisions such as food. And they asked me to provide that. And as you know, I'm unable to, eh, give such provisions.
Seni, ba rangelba, ina, logo, mo, e, enke la kui, fa uwa, uwa. Eh, na kutava, na se, si ge, guru, kuba, ba ke guru, na ba kalat. Ba kamsete, ndabu, diela, shon.
If you can fund us, then that will be of much benefit to all the elderly people.
Eh, kuma, ba ke guru, de ma kayali, sesuwa, ba, nama, ya shkone. Va, zu, aru, ba ba, na, na, ba ya, ba fam, ba ba, mi, ke, guru, bukuna, sa de, kaya, aru, wa. Eh, na, iste, ifi, uka lo, na, ba, ndu, ngofika, ba, unre, ba, ba, kaya, ba fam.
Eh, by having, eh, centers, we also, you also safeguard the lives of the elderly. Because when the children and grandchildren go to work or school, the elderly people are staying alone, are left alone. But when they go to centers, eh, things such as being raped and can be avoided.
Sena, logo, buku, uwa, ba ke guru, na ba kalabre, le sentare, na, ba, i, se, pi.
Because if all of us, the elderly, are in the centers, we will be protected.
Eh, bile, enka kunanga, eh, galana, kaku, ya, kela, kuali.
And I'm requesting that, may you please provide even, eh, places to sleep over in the centers, like other centers for white people. Bar TV, itami, foto, mi kar, mi chleka.
Eh, na, nama shon, ana, ma.
And that's what I want so that my, eh, children, grandchildren can see that I'm very smart.
Eh, le sentare, le loa, ka, ifu, na, mele, si, ni, keta, musho me, de, ka, na. Eh, ugu, zia, tu, goloi, ma, da, logo, di xanli, ya, ni, ya, exercise, na, ka, nu, botanakfa.
Eh, the centers are helping us a lot. I was involved in three car accidents and I was injured. But because of the centers going there, exercise, my health has improved. I'm, I can able, I'm now able to walk. Eh, I, I would love to thank you. I will show you that I'm able to walk. Thank you, as you can see. I'm Joyce Ndemande. I'm from here, in Zanini. Eh, first, I would love to say that I support the bill. Although some of the things, eh, are, I'm not in support of, you can't support everything. Oh, although the, eh, the bill cannot include everything that concerns us. Eh, I support it although it's sided on other issues. That's what I want to mention now. Although I won't mention all of them because some have been already covered. Some of the elderly centers. They don't have food. Others rely on donations. Eh, this bill doesn't cover only black community but also white community. As we go around, in some of the centers that we visited, eh, the situation was not so good. Eh, we realize that in such centers, they rely on donations. Because of that, others, they volunteered, the managers to support the centers. Eh, other, older, elderly people were chased away because there was no food for them in such centers. Eh, may you please include the issue of no, eh, of not having enough food in such centers because that's what lead people to stealing. Eh, I think maybe others might have covered these points, but I would love to add that in some clinics, when we go there, the nurses are telling us that they are on lunch. Even around two o'clock, we wonder if it's lunchtime on that time. And some of us older people, we return home without being helped. And we, the main reason of going to clinic, we wanted to be helped. Eh, I support the bill and I'm saying that I wish this bill was introduced sooner. Eh, because the issue of not being provided with food, it's really concerning. In some meetings, we are invited, but instead of scheduling the meeting in the morning, because they don't want to provide, eh, some meals for us, they postpone it to around eleven and we go there without being provided with food. Eh, and I would love to mention that when you invite elderly people to public meetings, we request that you make arrangement for transport. Don't just, eh, eh, appoint the municipality to take care of that because some of the meetings, we are unable to attend because provision for transport are not made. Thank you.
Madam Chair, let me start off by introducing myself. I'm Gazita, Githa Difongo, from Palabura. Yes. Eh, would like to acknowledge and appreciate the government's effort to close all the gaps in the older persons act thirteen of two thousand and six. To ensure that the older persons are protected physically, socially, and economically. However, we feel that there are still some serious gaps which when left open, they pose a serious threat to the protection of the older persons. We therefore would like to make the following improvements. The first one is in relation to clause number six. We acknowledge and appreciate the insertion of a new section seven A, which makes provisions for the responsibilities of older persons. However, we feel that the older person's rights to provide professional services to government is not protected. The older persons are entitled to render services to government on a part-time basis, like, you know, eh, in violation of exams. But when an older person who is sixty-five years of age and older applies. The system automatically kicks him, him or her out. And this is a serious violation of the older person's life. We therefore making this recommendation that, that, that older persons must be allowed to render professional services to government departments on part-time basis irrespective of the level of their old age, provided that they are healthy and strong enough to do so. The other clause that we feel, eh, still retains, you know, some gap is clause eight. This clause proposes an amendment to section thirteen of the principal act by substituting the word "stop" for the words "terminate" or "suspend." But sus- suspension can either be permanent, which is synonymous with termination. Suspension can also be temporary. If suspension is temporary, what is the duration of such a suspension? We're therefore making this recommendation. The duration of the suspension should be specified or the conditions which determine the duration of the suspension should be specified. Madam Chair, we want to conclude our input eh, by making comments on this concept called means test. Means test. This piece of legisstr- this piece of legislation, whether it falls within the older persons act thirteen of two thousand and six or not, it has a very strong bearing on the socioeconomic welfare of the older persons. it has a very strong bearing on the socioeconomic welfare of the older persons. It causes the old age couples who are affected by this piece of legislation to violate each other's rights. It causes lots of conflicts amongst the old age couples who are affected by means test. It causes one old age partner to depend on the other partner who is receiving civil pension salary. The dependent partner is not getting Sasa pension because of the total annual income for both couples, which exceeds the threshold as prescribed by means test. This causes many conflicts in the old age couples who are affected by this piece of legislation. We are therefore making this strong recommendation. That means test must be abolished. All older persons who are not civil pensioners must be entitled to Sasa pension grant, even if they are married to former civil servants. Madam Chair, I am leaving this written input with your team for further attention. Thank you so much. Hivito ra tata, nani ra wa na ra ma lo kuwezi ma ala hua, amen. Hore, hivito ke, but sir, the name of the son and the father and the Holy Spirit, I'm saying amen.
Amen.
Hivito ra me, me tsa kana grace, grace is mona tichonata shkui.
My name is Sakane Grace, means the mercy or the grace of God.
Me kaka me, nitsa me kase, ba tu kulu ba me, problemi, abana ala teli shbagetan. Ni, abana ala teli shbagetan, wa wa, umwa na umwa na. Grace manas.
Where I live, I live with my grandchildren. However, whenever I leave myself, my grandchildren do not really assist me by taking out or throw out that bucket for me. Of course, they do feed me in terms of food, but I don't really consume that much of food because I cannot go to a room. I used to, I'm not ashamed of what I'm about to say now. I used to leave myself in a bucket, however, there is bit smelly and eventually I had to organize myself newspaper seduct. When I help myself, I will put everything rapid and in a plastic and ask my grandchildren to go and throw it away for me, however, they refuse.
Will you please tell us where did you come from?
Mani wa no ma kuwi. I'm from Shifim Lawa, Madam Chair. Also, one other matter is that I don't really have a proper wheelchair. When I ask my grandchildren to push me on that wheelchair, because it's not automatic, they refuse. I went to the hospital, asked the hospital personnel to provide me with an automatic wheelchair, they refused. I am really struggling. Don't look at my printed dress and think maybe everything is fine. I am really struggling. I do have some of the good skills that I have. Looking at the dress that I have now, I've sewed this dress myself. And also, when I have to move, I have to move using chairs inside the house. But that doesn't mean I'm lazy. If you can come to my house, you will realize that there are no weeds on the ground. I do remove weeds myself. But honestly, because I can't walk, it seems like God must take my life and I can rest. I also try to go to church every Sunday. I've been living through one of the churches in Pretoria, but some of these reverends pastors do not even pray for me. Ah, please, can you please, you other rebels, help me. I have a pain here on my spinal cord and I'm experiencing that pain regularly. Thank you so much for the privilege and opportunity of being with you, Madam Chair. And I really appreciate, if I had been, I was going to go to, to Parliament Direct, going to assist me.
Can we get the social waiter to go to Mama and get the number? Can you bring the number for us? The social... Oh, no. Si tali number, Mama. Because the social development attempts, we are able to get wheelchair and request for a wheelchair, but not the automatic one. It will depend, but Masitoli, Uma Abedamunu is coming here. In fact, is coming from this area and she has got a consequence officer. She will be able to make a follow-up on this issue. Ya Mama, pull the rest, a wheelchair on it. Ma, kulu ma ni social waiter and social waiter must bring the report, I told you ma, up a bit before we leave.
Madam Chair, I'm asking for your numbers, please.
Okay, you get them. The secretary there is going to give you all our numbers, all of them.
Madam, with the red clothes, I love you. When you came in, you were smiling at me, so you were very kind with me. So I also love you with your red clothes.
Can we go to this side, Baba or here's like, then you can come in, ulandele by Ma and then followed by the Marun Duke, Marun Duke. Ma, we're not, I'm gonna see side, I was. And then, who else on this other side?
La Mota de Banana, Sava Stool, Les Salé Banana.
Yes. You will be the last one to leave, okay, ma? This way, I do write in the numbers, all our numbers, for Mama, then. And then, let's go to this side. And then, that other side? I don't see hands. And that other one? Then we will follow. Your name, where you come from, whether you support or not support.
Ah, thank you, Chairperson. My name is Milaz Banatoha. I'm from Pa Palabor, one minister party team. Indeed, I support this program of bettering the life of the elderly people. Well, a lot of what I wanted to say has already been said, but I have a question, which I'm hopeful that it can be answered. Now, I would like to know the process that is going to be followed after this bill has been passed, which will ensure that the elderly people's lives get to be improved. And I would also like to know as to how are the elders going to be informed that what we have agreed upon here gets to be carried out? Now, we all know that the legislatures, together with the elders, do not stay in the same era. So, we would like to know as to how are the elderly people are going to be informed if the, or if what we have agreed upon is carried out? And also, what they should do if ever what we have agreed upon does not materialize? General, I thank you. Greetings to everyone. I'm grateful for this opportunity so that I can get to contribute to this topic. We are grateful for this bill that takes care of the elderly people. And I indeed support it. And I would also like to mention a few things within this bill that ourselves as elderly people are not pleased with. Firstly, I would like to indicate that I started volunteering as are the elderly, or as the elderly people's committee in the year nineteen ninety-five. The challenges that the elderly people face, I started seeing them in the year nineteen ninety-five, up until now, ever since I started volunteering. And again, I would like to pass my appreciation to the government for having created centers for the elderly so that they can be taken care of. Bakono, kumala, se, se, be, ra, kona, o, utava, ra, ge, wo. Now, eh, those who came before me have already told, eh, spoken about, eh, the centers. Now, I would also like to add that, eh, within these centers, there are caregivers. So, I am saying that, eh, the government should take care of these, eh, caregivers, so that they can also have, eh, get to have, eh, their bath salts. They should, eh, be able to can bathe, so that they can, eh, look good. I also want to talk about the health issues, about the hospitals. There is law, it has been created, but it is not, eh, being carried out. When, eh, when elderly people go to the hospitals, hoping to receive the care that they need. Doctors will say to them, how old are you and why do you still need to live on? Now, I know what I have, eh, or what I'm talking about, health issue. Eh, there was a time when I went to, eh, the hospital, I was, eh, quite, eh, butchered by the time, there was someone pushing me. And the doctor said, eh, this person, eh, is old, so why more does she want? Why does she want to live on? And, eh, the doctor, then I told the person who was pushing me with a wheelchair that, eh, that person should leave me at home. That person should only come to the hospital to fetch my medication. And at the time I was ill, I needed to be cared by the doctor. So, I was asking you to speak to them so that they can, eh, give us proper care. Now, I am happy that, eh, there is law, but the problem is that, eh, this law is not actually, eh, being carried out. In that, eh, elderly people are suffering, you should come to our pay points and see how we are suffering. And also, eh, the shops where we, we go, eh, elderly people are not being taken care of. We are asking that, eh, the pay points that have been closed, they should be reopened, so that, eh, the elderly people can go to, eh, pay points nearer to them. So that they can, eh, be able to can also buy food and take, eh, that food back to their homes.
The social, the personal, I did do the silver, that is, man.
Now, there are elderly people who do not have, eh, children, who are taking care of them. And when, or others have children, but such children are still there, money, they still there, eh, cuts. So, when they go to, eh, the pay points, who is going to take care of them? We are asking that pay points be opened and services be provided. The elderly people should not walk for long distances to the pay points, they cannot walk for long distances, eh, doing shopping. We are saying that the services should come to the people. Now, we are also asking that, eh, when elderly people go to the police stations to report cases, they be treated with courtesy. Because sometimes when you go to the police station to report a case, those who are supposed to help you, they laugh at you, asking you, what is it that you know about the law? So, that actually, eh, makes the elderly people angry and because of that anger, they become sick.
Mara, na kulumu, eh, my kid, Ayela, Health Secretary, eh, disclose the name of the police sta, I mean, the name of the police station and the name of the police, if we akumbula, which man, ask me, ke, pile.
Hey, lo, ore. Hey, lo, ore, eh, kira, kere, eh, kira, eh, eh, kira, kere. Rokoba, la, eh, mola, kasa, le, ne, kike, le, ba, bo, cha, ore, ay kaba, kiko, police station, eh, eh, fi, lo, kada, eh, police, eh, le, 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 o, kona, chewo, ke, mani, na, la, kaba, lo, kada, ay kaba, kika, fi, eh, fi. I, I'd also like to thank our government for having, eh, taught us that there are elderly people's ailments, ailments such as, eh, dementia. Now, because of such a training, eh, people now know about these ailments. And that thing of elderly people being accused of a witchcraft, eh, elderly people getting killed, has now came to an end. I thank you.
Let me remind, eh, no, bu, ba, tabata, ukuti, fanele, sikulu, mesongela, eh, o. So, masi, eh, zamut, szeba, beach, if there is anything, any, eh, oh. Maria, gis, oli, ine. I'm grateful to hear, ine, I'm saying that at least, let's remind ourselves, na, ba, tabata, la, that, fanele, sinie, eh, even, eh, the others, eh, chance to speak. So, ma, ba zamut, ba, desh, shot, miana, if anything that happens, okay, eh, they want to report, they still will be, eh, put, they must go to that table.
Eh, ba, juar, ba, mi, tsumzo, shana, kame, de, shabo, kani, ne, shu, ba, tsake, la, da, de, shabo, bo, talava, mui, ne, kuma, karo, bulabo. Pakonda, la, de, shabo, minase, mi, ngala, eshtuwe, uta, bulabo, mi, ban, shoko, ya, ba, kame, komisa, kwen, de, la, de, shabo, na, ba, kama, ne, ba, kuma, karo, bulabo. Kaslo, o, ne, ti, ma, kati, moa, ne, le, ti, na, ba, kame, ti, beka, mi, ngati, po, le, na, eh, wa, ne, pongo, mani, ne, eh, ma, tafle, eh, la, mi, ngati, afika, mi, ti, beka, ko, mko.
Eh, I greet all of you. I would also love to thank you for coming in here to listen to the, eh, outcries of all, all the people, because from today, eh, concerns will be heard. Eh, me, eh, I'm Maria Rasmani from Saseka. Eh, eh, we have a concern regarding our soccer field, or soccer ground, our elderly people are not able to play soccer in that soccer ground. Eh, our ground is not even, it's got some trenches due to the rain, eh, rain. Eh, we are advised to go to, eh, eh, the counselor as well as the royal, eh, eh, leadership to help us, but, who were not helped. Eh, and also, we are advised to go and speak to the contractor who is nearby to grade the ground, which he did, but eh, the work that he did was not so good, because the ground still is not pliable. And we have, eh, some thorns, these bushes of thorns around, when we play soccer, our ball, eh, get, eh, punched by those thorns. And another concern that we have, sometimes we have to go to another area to for, to play with other, eh, elderly people. When we ask for donations, we are not given donation, instead, we are, eh, told that, how can you ask for donation? Eh, is it not that older people get grant? I don't want to specify the, the treatment that we got from some of the shops here, but we don't, we, we are not helped when it comes to, eh, donations to arrange for trial. Eh, another thing that I would love to report to you, I don't know what I'm doing, eh, and I think by reporting this to you, one day I went to the clinic, eh, because I, I had an issue with my mom, she didn't walk. So, I accompanied her to clinic, I tried to explain what was her problem, but the nurses, they gave an injection. She explained that her legs and waist, it's giving her problems, she can't walk. But only to find that after a while, that injection, instead of helping her to walk, made her unable to, to walk. And she, eh, later, her mother passed away, but she, she just said now that she will just stop here, because it won't help, the mother is passed away already. Thanks. I support the bill, especially the part which addresses the issue of social workers to, eh, who are, have the responsibility to assist with the abuse in the fairness.
Alright, see you, Mama.
Uh, greetings, my name is Sarah Hoke.
Eh, Wat Five, Marule Municipality.
Wat Five, in your, eh, Marule Municipality. And, eh, the ownership of, eh, Hoshi Mamita. I'm very grateful to have met with, eh, parliament. I believe that, eh, you are going to help us.
I believe that eh, you are going to help us regarding the challenges that we meet in our centers. We came here running after we had heard that eh, the Parliament is coming. So that we can tell you eh, what our challenges are. We support eh, the issue that we had here, because what is happening here is beautiful. Now, something that I would like to say is as follows. In January, eh, the 7th, we encountered a big problem at our center. Someone stopped us from entering our center as per that rule. When we spoke to him, he said that that whole place is his, because he had paid for it eh, at the traditional eh, leaderships. I then said that it is better that I go and speak to the traditional authority. Eh, so that they can explain as to how they have given us that place, whereas it is yours, you have paid for it, while we have also paid for it. We left together with the chairman of the board, and we went to eh, the traditional leader, and we then told them what the problem was. When we got to eh, the traditional leader, he said that he has given that particular individual an area, which is not the area in this group, because he was never given the papers for the area in this group. Now eh, a person was sent from the eh, traditional eh, authority. So that eh, that person can go and show eh, this particular eh, person who fight, who is fighting over our area, that the rightful place that eh, has been eh, allotted to him. But he didn't want to accept that area that has been allotted to him. The traditional leader then arranged a meeting set for the 31st of January. So that eh, this particular man who stopped us from entering our center could bring his documentation. And also that we can also bring our documentation. But he refused to attend that meeting. The traditional leader then advised me to go to eh, the protestation. And when I got there, I was advised to go to eh, the magistrate's court. Eh, hoping that they would give me a document that would then help me, eh, help them to can follow up on this matter. On the 1st of February, I went to eh, the magistrate's court at Nienye. And when I got there, I was fed to the legal aid board in town. When I got to the legal aid, I was eh, told that this eh, empty old matter. So even though it is a difficult matter, they will try to see what they can do. They will then invite us later.
Askisme, askis, askisme. Ya, taba, uko ti, we still have to go to a court with what happened? Can we request you let to go to the social workers? Or the social workers should go to Maburu? And Maburu are related this story? And then miss Tele, uko ti, iti ni ribo, kowili.
Jo, ne, ne, ne.
And also, umu, you must tell us what is the center registered with social technology or not. I say that, eh, my kid, ma, the story are related, wa, bo, wo, si, si, la, as social workers.
Eh, you're registered?
Yes, it is registered.
Because I don't understand, if they are registered, bene to defika yeti, aningeni, you don't enter no way. Okay, the argument.
Right, right.
Ah, okay, oh.
I thank you.
Social workers, when you go out of the hall, please give us the report and what is it that you are going to do about you, umu, the report. Over to you, man. Thanks.
Eh, I'm Saran Mawale Balatia, I'm from Dany Village eh, under this Zanin Umskara. Eh, my concern that I would love to eh, mention to you is that eh, can a legislation be implemented that prevents older people to go to eh, this long church? Because that's where we get another abuse by loaning money from them.
To the mic, please, come closer to the mic. So, eh, and also ma, ucho, uti, you support Maburu? And then ukuu, umu. Okay.
I support the bill, including all the comments that were made here. Thank you. I would love, I would love to eh, welcome you, all the team from Cape Town. You came from eh, far, I know Cape Town, I know that you take, it takes two days to reach Cape Town, I welcome all of you.
Eh, my name is Amy Recoso, from eh, Wolden Farm. Eh, I have eh, a project called, I stand badjuari from eh.
Eh, the point that I wanted to mention unfortunately was taken by eh, another lady from Manumele who spoke eh. Eh, I've, I'm talented with helping the elderly with exercises from eh, my area and the Mopandi. Eh, district has noticed that and they have been supporting me. I've noticed that by helping the elderly, they are helping groups. Then from 2012, I invited all the elderly people to meet, so that we can eh, do the exercises. Eh, until now, my project is, has grown. We have eh, above sixteen elderly people that participate in this Shaysani project. And I've also obtained a certificate on this. Eh, I've only had a small building, eh, eh, very small, I think the size of five meter or eh, seven. We didn't have a shelter, then we went to eh, the king Davesita to request his help. Last year, we got help from him. He had built a wall this size and eh, in shade of shelter. In that shelter, we were able to do a lot of cultural eh, artifacts, like usenga, eh, chalu, sort of pizza.
Ma, yena la, oh, that you think in the bill is fanele sini yesa. When you have been assisted, you know, no chief wa kele, manje, shota, eh, la, have a bill. Alright, alright, wow, ba, we, fanele, uku ya, ma, must fala. You must go to the municipality and request all what you have said. And then, Tina, what you need to do, uku ya la, hire a table in, and request this, so that we assist you to talk to the municipality.
Thank you very much for inviting us to come here and speak to you. And we really appreciate what you are doing on our behalf. I would love to say hello to all of you. Eh, I'm excited to see you coming here to assist us. Eh, my name is Sunita, I'm from Sunita. I'm from Mamiwa, Watwa. Ava, eh, sekete ni, yama tuwe, ni, na, eh, twa, eh, tieleri, na, eh, risu, bo, no. Loku, eh, famba, au, kuitaku, ngakutu fa. Eh, se, eh, ne, shi, ne, kafi ka, ne, bo, no, eh. Va, eh, jo, di, sa, na, kubungu, no, ka. Eh, karri, ki, ma, eh, tasuwa, tasuwa, eh, ra, eh, ti, bo. Otwa eh, eh, ah, udi ma, kuota, fa. Eh, I would love to plan eh, project of helping us elderly people to play eh, sports like soccer, because initially, we had some health issues with eh, unable to walk. But by joining these eh, sports activities, our health is improved, we are able to walk. Most of eh, my points have been taken. What I would love to add is that we are still struggling to get eh, eh, donations at our centers eh, to buy food and water. Eh, but we really appreciate what you are doing on our behalf. Eh, the bill talks about eh, a lot of abuse. The bill talks about a lot of abuses that we older people are facing. And I support all the what has been said regarding that.
O, ikeraku, ke, se, ku, maritula, ma, ngawa, eh, tu, la, woho, ya, eh, ya, eh, ya, eh, seketé, la, u, u.
I would love to thank you for all of that. Thank you.
We are gonna hear, I can feel and see it, that sports as a culture is nowhere. But people here in this province are very active in terms of the sports, the museum, all those things. But we'll also take up the matter. So, umuntu, ofuna ku, di, ma, ofuni, we must also allow those activities in each and every area to happen. But Tina, what we're going to assist is to request to sports as a culture, while the province, maximum, tumele, style, and now, nationally, assist a band of the sport.
Si, si, komba, konge, la, eka, she, zankole, she, ombe, eh, she, gresi, kaga, shonan, si, si, kona, shu, ikosha, de, shako. Za, uro ne, ya, mi, kango, na, bo, na, bu, si, la, a, ikona, mi, ka, ku, ku, na, ku, me, shana, a, eh, dis, si, tu, a, yona, ita, na, ni, fanele, ke. Kuda, ni, ge, stava, zankoka, de, shako, ba, pundi, wa, ba, ko, na, ba, ba, su, ne, la, ma, da, esap, ba, ko, na, ba, ba, ku, na, ba, o, fa, na, mu, na, la, ba, di, te, ka, ka. Wa, la, ba, ko, na, ba, ba, atseka, eka, som, kango, na, ku, ju, lo, le, kame, ke, se, so, ita, na, ka, ku, wa, ne, ne, si, lam, si, wa, kano.
Ki, amba, woba. I thank you. Kretan, katala, hapanya, watre.
My name is Alteka Chata, from Kretan, Ava, hapanya, watre.
Ki, sakota, la, waka, wa, etu, fu, wa, ba, tu, fa.
I support this elderly people's bill.
Eh, levela, la, kau, ya, pe, de, ilo, plus one.
When we look at plus one.
Eh, waya, kamo, la, u, la, wa, two thousand and six.
According to the two thousand and six, what?
Uwe, kethulorani, cha, ba, tu, fa.
It discriminates against elderly people.
Now, eh, wo, wo, kumu, tu, fa, i, wa, mu, khe, guru, osari, do, wa, la, year sixty.
Now, the reason I'm saying so is because it stated that for a female elderly person to be regarded as an elderly, that person should be sixty years of age.
Eh, de, mu, kala, eh, kwanu, wa, ali, ala, le, ma, eh, sixty-five, no, fe.
And when that person is a male person, for him to be regarded as an elderly person, he should be sixty-five years of age or above.
Ya, le, mu, la, waka, wa, etu, fu, wa, anabiati. Ki, au, sakota, la, kau, mu, kala, eh, mu, khe, guru, ba, lega, na, kame, wa, ha, ya, wa, lega, na, sixty, no, fe.
Now, I support this current bill because it doesn't discriminate based on age between the male and female elderly person.
Mu, ka, kau, ya, bo, ne, plus four. Ki, wana, eh, eh, tu, la, de, de, kau, ya, ya, mi, six.
Now, I can see that plus four is similar to plus six.
Gawa, ka, la, ore, di, wulela, ka, chirile, tu, ya, di, ku, ke, lo, ya, ba, ku, fe, kama, ka, na, ka, jo.
Because they both speak about the protection of the elderly person's rights.
Ki, sakota, la, waka, wa, etu, fu, ki, ala.
I support this bill and I thank you.
Greetings to all of you, members of the parliament who came today. Greetings everyone, Monsieur. Greetings to all the elderly who are here. I'll be very short because lots of speakers have already mentioned lots of points. All I can say is that I do support the support, the meeting that we have today. All I can ask from you is that you take all the points that were discussed today and take them back to parliament. With all that has been discussed today, wanna thank you for all the reminders that came from you. When coming back to the point of the hospital, what has been said at Soto. When you go to the hospital with some pains, let me speak about elderly people who are older than I, because I'm still bit stronger. When you take them to the hospital, they will be told that, look, that has something to do with old age and that pains us. I've also heard that when it comes to the court registry, there is a list of the rapists and people who have done other criminal things. However, when it comes to us, we other people, those who are abusers or abuse us, their names are not very on the register. Let me explain why. It's because these abusers are our own children and also our own grandchildren. Hence, we are not really reporting them. Moreover, when we, as the villagers, when we look at our neighbor and see something of that nature, that is an abuse, we do not really report it. Because we say, look, we need to protect ourselves. To those who are elderly people who do not participate in the projects of elderly people, I would like to encourage them to always come. Because being there, it offers them an opportunity to vent out their grievances and also be able to get food. Because they also cook for us in such areas. Regarding the organizations that are appointed to train caregivers who could be also in our own homes, I would also like to ask them or perhaps to ask them to have such meetings where they can give good instruction and training to the caregivers on how to conduct that caregiving to us, what elderly people in our homes. I'm a little closer from Babanana, Old Age, what level? Thank you. Greetings.
Fa, I thank you for this opportunity. My name is, my name is Johannes Manchela. I'm from Hasagoro. My related respect. I would like to touch on four issues that are actually like to elaborate on. I'm asking that when social workers come to the centers, when the social workers come to the centers, they should also speak to the elderly people, not only the caregivers. I joined Huganam in the year twenty eleven, but it has never happened that I get to speak with social workers. So I am asking that they should give themselves time to speak to the elderly so that they can tell them what their problems are. The second point is the municipality and the social workers. We get to have games, for example, the Males Marathon. Now, when we are at those games, we get compete with the other elderly people as well as the youth. But we are not actually are being given the recognition that is being given to the youth. When you have worn, you do not get recognized because you cannot claim that you have worn while you are in the six, having a youth in front of you. Now, the third point is that I am those elderly people's trainer. They are all here and they know that the number one trainer there in my group is me. Now, we are asking the social workers to give the trainers proper clothing so that it can be recognizable that this is the person who coaches the other. It cannot be that I go and train other people while wearing this clothes that I am wearing. Now, the last point is that when we are there at the games, yourselves and the social workers, you should not get there and then become coaches. Let those who are coaches, those who have been coaching them all along, continue on doing their job. I thank you.
Let me first start by saying greetings to all of you in the name of Jesus. I would like to say thank you so much to those who extended an invitation to us to be here. And thank you to the tribe of the kings and also thank you also to the social worker for this opportunity. I am Florama Dongane from Wamido at Ward Twelve. Here are our credences. Where the project at Wamido. The project has been there for a while, but it's still on its early stages. It's been years we've been doing this project. However, we are asking now specifically for the municipality and also the social worker to intervene with us still struggling with this project. We can gym and also play soccer. We will, how will we request the government to give us our own soccer field? Because currently, we're using the soccer fields of our own children. Currently, the area or the apartment where we meet, it's not ours. So can you please kindly request the government to give us our own place and also a proper shelter so that when it's raining, we are able to be undercover. Also, I would like to ask the social worker to quickly intervene so that we can also fly, go to Brazil and see these places. We want also to take that soccer cap, bring it here in the popo. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to greet you all in the word of the Almighty and Jesus Christ, amen. My name is Pebo Bobey. I'm from Mameidua. Ward Twelve. We aren't being taught or coached, but where we are being coached at the area, it's not ours. It's from Umaramisi. We don't have a shelter. We do get involved in sports, playing football. However, we don't have a proper soccer field. The previous speaker has mentioned that as well. Honestly, playing soccer has assisted us a lot, helped us a lot. That is part of the gym. I couldn't even walk properly, but now I am active and I can also play football. I really appreciate this opportunity that we got from the government. This is a good initiative. Honestly, I know that things are going to be much difficult, but for us now, we are participating. I go to gym. I can also play football. Thank you.
Alright, let's take the last group from that other end side. Baba.
Papa.
That's all eh? Alright, you will be the last one. You are supposed to introduce yourself, your name and where you come from and tell the community whether you support or you don't support the people.
I thank you for the opportunity that you had been. I have many names. Now, that the sports field, my name is Berzuma. And at the home base care, I am Everett. My parents named me Mapula Nanseka. I am from Lepebani. Under Zaneni Municipality. I am here to thank you for having visited us so that you can advise us on what to do and what not to do. Now, I am actually grateful for everything that has been said here regarding the clinics and also about what is happening in their homes. I have heard them and I'm not going to repeat what has already been said. Now, I want to approach the social workers. I would ask them to come to where we reside because they are not helping us. We also have new people who are helping us, but they are not receiving their stipends. And for that reason, they do not stay for long because they are receiving nothing. Now, the other problem is that the elderly people do not go to their pay points anymore. I asked them to go there and you'll find that because the elderly people get to. But when they go to their pay points, now because we go on their behalf, you'll find that the elderly person has since taken a bath a month before. So and again, they are received these food passes. So I would also appreciate it if we can also begin with those food passes because it happens that sometimes at our homes, we do not have food. Now, since I have a, I have a home base care, sometimes I visit the elderly people. Sometimes when I get there, I would find that the elderly person had not bathed for a very long time. So when I get there. Now, I would like the social workers to lead with the traditional authority so that the traditional authority can ensure that the elderly people whom are able to and still walk, come and meet with us so that we can create support groups. Because I have noticed that most of the time when we invite elderly people to come to the sports field, to come and exercise with us, they will tell us that they are busy with their own chores. But ever since some of them came to exercise with us, they have realized that exercising has health benefits. Now, when exercising, we exercise our feet, our hands, our minds and also through laughter. Because when we exercise and one of us falls to the ground, we laugh and that increases the depression.
And you do it in this young, do exercises. Much as fun as pets, I want to make a tale much. Mara, you don't laugh at those ones that are still falling down. What do you want us to do? What is it that is left? Laugh with me.
Now, what I want to be included in the veil is that you should provide us with a home base care and we should be able to get home base centers and so that we can be able to visit people in their homes and they should be provided with walking sticks.
Even if it's a tactile issue and see several health. So let's be patient.
Greetings to all of you elders who came to visit us here in our province and we say greetings to you in the name of Jesus, amen. I would like to greet you all back to the issues that you already mentioned regarding where we meet and all of that. However, those who are currently assisting us, they do their best. They do have different activities that help them to raise funds and they also buy us food. I'll hear you loud and clear when we say we need to be straight to the point and also contribute in this bill so that whatever thing that is agreed or approved from parliament, we also have our own share in your decision. Of course, I do support the bill fully. However, I would also like to add that these pay points of these grants should be close to us elderly people. There are elderly people who are older than I, who cannot really walk long and distant. Now, there will be some people who may throw money for them. Those people do not bring back the money to these elderly people. Regarding the other burial societies, we realize that some of these elderly people passed on without being any member of any burial society. So please, by all means, can we please have these burial societies close to us where we get our money from? That would be very helpful. Thank you.
All corporates observed. Amen. Protocol observed.
I would like to break the table and say all protocols observed.
Malauteu litlukauana yao support.
Now, what I would like to say is that the culture that you are here with are really supportive. Now, the problem is that our parliament takes too long to implement things. So we would like that to be hastened. Secondly, there is at APN A certificate for donation. Yes, which is what we provide when we are asking for donations. But the problem is that when those people are supposed to give us those funds, they are hesitant and we do not know what the problem is. So we would like you to follow up very much. So we would like you to follow up very much. Now, the second point is that those people who are here, because we have been running this for many years, but there was never a time whereby we had a meeting with the mayor. So we were asking that we should have communication with them. I'm saying this because I was contacted yesterday evening at eight, and I was told that I should gather my people at a setting spot. Now, the problem is that how do I get an elderly person from the villages and put them at their spot within the short notice that I was given? Now, I would also like the social development people to actually follow up on the grounds, because there are others that we are with who do not receive anything at all. And there are instances where we have to give them tea, we have to give them food, and the problem that they survive on nothing. As I have stated, I have been running these organizations since twenty few or two thousand six. Yes, and we have volunteers who, as I stated, they receive nothing. They have since received a standard of twenty eleven, twenty fourteen, and twenty fourteen program. Yes, from Noto. So I would ask the social development people to intervene and help. Greetings, my name is Saran Nisi. I am from Madule. Our center's name is Old Age. We have since started our organization in the year twenty ten. There isn't any progress at all. We do not even have a stand of our... Yeah, we have a stand, but we do not have a shade. Now, our guest stand is not even fenced, it doesn't have shade, we are just in an open space. So we are asking our social development officials not to distance themselves from us. We have our caregivers, but the problem is that we do not have food. As I have stated, that we have since started in the year twenty ten. So the problem is that the caregivers are now starting to distance themselves. They do not attend as they used to because of the challenges that we have. Now, we are asking the government to intervene and support us, so that our caregivers can also see that they are receiving the support that they need. And we are grateful for everything that has been discussed here and we support it. I thank you.
Hey, Gyaldeboa.
I thank you.
Lina Lakake Daniel Matita from Hamquati Village.
My name is Daniel Matita from?
Hamquati.
Hamquati Village in Zanimbe, in this part.
He distributed this beef around Tana.
I would like to take this opportunity and thank Social America Makovera.
And Robaniri, Robanirikapishisho, was presented a area on a paper on our understanding. And as a result, this bill is supported.
We read this bill and got to understand it, and as a result, we support it.
Gyaldeboa.
I thank you. Greetings and I thank you. I thank all the visitors and everyone and the social workers, and as a result, we are here as we have been invited. The reason I'm standing here is because inside our project, we encounter different challenges. We encounter challenges such as our elderly people receive their social health. But it is not themselves who go and get the funds. Someone else goes and receives those funds on their behalf. So they therefore come into our project without any money, and they do not even have any food. So because of that, we do not have any food we can give to them in our project. We therefore have to go around asking for donations, and we do not get those donations as our president. The other challenge is that people that we get to help us in this project do not last, they do not stay for long because they are receiving nothing. And after they have left, we would find ourselves being two or three in number. I said, "My name is Lina Shiluri from Alabora Majete." Under the project, Nina Old Age. I thank you, and I say that I just said that I support this bill. May it go on. I am Aletha Shkambana. I greet all of you. I'm from a project called Jangelani. I stand here to support everyone who spoke about doctors. I've got hypertension, diabetes, and arthritis. I asked them what does it mean, the arthritis? And they told me that it's a illness that affects our telephones. I went to the clinic and I spoke with a doctor. The doctor asked me what is wrong with me. I told him that I have a problem with my legs and hands. And I was seventy by then. The doctor told me that there is nothing wrong with your balls. Then I asked my doctor, "Lord, take me home," pushing me by the wall. Then when I arrived home, I asked her to help me go to my bedroom and pray. Then I prayed to God, saying that if doctors cannot assist me with my illness, then it means you are the one who's going to help, since you have resurrected Lazarus from the dead. Then my neighbor invited me to go for gym or exercise, but I told her that how can I go to the gym because I can't walk? Then I went just for one week for the gym, and later after that, I was... I was okay, I could walk now and with no problem. I'm inviting every older person to go to the gym. It helps improve our health and lives. But the only problem we have is we don't have food. We have to cater that for ourselves at home. And those who were cooking for us, they have quit because they said they cannot continue rendering such a service without payment. When we see you, we are so glad because you are going to help us. Thank you.
And you have also encouraged us to go to the gym. The department is with us and I'm sure, definitely sure, that they are going to encourage Amandoba Tala to go to the gym. I don't think there's lots that you need from the department. And two o'clock now, we have to be, try to be faster. So we are going to give the department just to comment on what you have said. And as reported, how far has she gone with the wheelchair thing? We requested to quickly fasten and request a wheelchair around here. And the social workers, we said before we leave the room, they must tell us about Uma, the one who fed Uma late complaint. So we want to know the way forward. The last other thing that we have forgotten is to request Honorable to just wave to you. In fact, he has joined us, but he told us that he will join later. And Majete is with us, so he must... And Majete is with us, so he must just greet you and introduce himself.
Good afternoon, Ausheli. My name is Decham Stock. I'm a member of the committee. I joined later because I had to travel from the northern Cape to come and join the public areas. Thank you.
Let's give over to the departments.
Uh, good afternoon, everyone, and chairperson, thank you very much for the opportunity granted to the Department of Social Development to respond to the issues that have been raised this morning by this gathering. Thank you very much, Mama Vana and the honorable members of the Portfolio Committee on Social Development. We appreciate this initiative that you have embarked upon specifically, you know, starting with this province, which is in the far front areas of our country. I want to also take this opportunity to thank the parliamentary support and secretariat teams, as well as the team from the Department of Social Development, because without you, this work was not going to be a success. Let me, without any further ado, touch on some of the critical things that I think would require our immediate response, but also to chart a way forward in terms of how we will deal with some of the issues raised here this morning. Chairperson, I want to firstly touch on the issue that you raised relating to the wheelchair before I get into the other issues. We have facilitated engagement with the Department of Health. We have secured an appointment for Monday for the measurement of Umar who was here and beyond. They've indicated that they will not be able to carry a wheelchair before they can engage with the person and take measurements so that they can order her a wheelchair. So the National Department will be following up with the province to ensure that we get a report of the delivery of the wheelchair very soon.
Then I'm going to tell the parliament about the issue of the wheelchair.
I am now going to respond to some of the critical issues and I will try to summarize as I have tried to also package them as our speakers were taking the floor. The first issue is around issues linked to our social security agency, where our older persons were complaining about service points, the state of service points, the pension payouts, which have always, you know, on many occasions been postponed, which also cost them a lot of money to travel and be exposed to unbearable weather conditions and only to go back home without their pension funds being paid out. Linked to that was an issue around the distances that our older persons have got to travel, as well as the queues, the long queues that they have to be exposed to, but also the conditions of the infrastructure at those service points. And lastly, also the maintenance tests. There are other issues that we have also noted. The team will be consolidating a full report, but these are the critical ones that I thought I must touch on. But also commit that the department and its portfolio will make sure that the issues are well addressed and taken into consideration by Sasa and a report to this effect will be delivered to the Portfolio Committee. The other issues, I'm going to now step off Sasa and focus on the other issues that impact on the municipality. I'm not going to attempt to respond to that. Chairperson, suffice to indicate that there are a number of issues that impact on the active aging program that are linked to municipalities and I think these need to be taken up with the municipalities so that they can be taken care of to enable our older persons to fully embark on their active aging program. Uh, some of those things, for example, were around the issues of the management of the active aging activities of older persons. The grounds where our older persons are, in fact, you know, conducting their exercises and so forth. And I think as indicated, issues of water, they also have had a negative bearing on our older persons in terms of fully, you know, participating in the program. And I think it's important that we indicate that this will be, you know, appropriately packaged for notification of the municipality. The other issue, uh, chairperson, I will now step off the municipality issues. I just want to quickly sum up issues of health. We've noted concerns around the state of affairs within clinics, the shortage of medication. Medication never being delivered on time in some instances, the attitudes of our nurses in clinics. And I think this, chairperson, clearly points to the need for a coordinated and a joint, you know, approach to the management of some of these issues because they do impact negatively on our older persons. So these matters will have to be brought to the attention of the Department of Health, just as the other ones that have been brought in by our older persons relating to the need for some basic issues of sporting, you know, needs will be taken to the Department of Sport and Recreation. And hence I'm saying there's need for strong coordination and collaboration, but also, you know, joint approaches in some of the areas because one department cannot fully fulfill some of the needs of our older persons. So I'm now going to step off both the sport and recreation issues as well as the health issues. And lastly, in terms of the importance of supporting the various activities that are happening in this province, I would like to urge our social workers to be in touch with the different projects and the different platforms where our older persons in fact converge to ensure that they live actively at all times. Remember that the active aging program is the program of the Department of Social Development and we are encouraging that it happens across all provinces and the minister has requested that it in fact happens 365 days. And I want to congratulate the OBO specifically this area for all these activities that we've noted that are linked to the active aging program.
Then I'm going to tell the parliament about the issue of the social development.
We were told that we were not able to go to the clinic or to the hospital. We were told that we were not able to go to the clinic or to the hospital. We were told that we were not able to go to the clinic or to the hospital. We were told that we were not able to go to the clinic or to the hospital. We were told that we were not able to go to the clinic or to the hospital. What active aging problem? We were told that we were not able to go to the clinic or to the hospital. We were told that we were not able to go to the clinic or to the hospital. We were told that we were not able to go to the clinic or to the hospital. We were told that we were not able to go to the clinic or to the hospital. We were told that we were not able to go to the clinic or to the hospital.
For that, we thank you as older persons and for you also to have, you know, made your pain, to have taken the pains to make sure that you understand this problem. And I also want to say there are a number of issues that have been raised by our older persons as concerns linked to the execution of these activities. So as we embark on the engagements with older persons, I would like to also encourage that we conduct some training and capacity building of our older persons from the various programs of the department because clearly as they speak you realize that there's a lag and also to avail your times and days on which you are in the area so that they can know where to reach you and when to reach you. So that when they have platforms like these, they are able to also, you know, talk about the work that you do with them rather than, you know, feel like this is a platform that they now have to in fact start expressing their challenges which should have been resolved a while ago.
And then we were told that we can say something right now, but we didn't have the money. We were told that we were not able to go to the clinic or to the hospital. We were told that we were not able to go to the clinic or to the hospital. We were told that we were not able to go to the clinic or to the hospital. We were told that we were not able to go to the clinic or to the hospital. We were told that we were not able to go to the clinic or to the hospital. We were told that we were not able to go to the clinic or to the hospital. We were told that we were not able to go to the clinic or to the hospital. We were told that we were not able to go to the clinic or to the hospital. We were told that we were not able to go to the clinic or to the hospital.
The last issue, Chairperson and Honorable Members, that I want to touch on is the issue of abuse. I want to quickly talk to that because the current legislation is very clear. It really is pro-protection and safety of our older persons. And I've heard some concerns relating to abuse of our older persons.
We were told that we were not able to go to the clinic or to the hospital. We were told that we were not able to go to the clinic or to the hospital. We were told that we were not able to go to the clinic or to the hospital. We were told that we were not able to go to the clinic or to the hospital. We were told that we were not able to go to the clinic or to the hospital. We were told that we were not able to go to the clinic or to the hospital.
I just want to emphasize that any in terms of our principal act which was referred to earlier on, we define any person who abuses an older person as guilty of an offense, be it physical abuse, sexual abuse, psychological abuse, economic abuse, or any harm or distress that they cause to our older persons. To that effect, the department has established a register of abuse to enable anyone to report any kind of abuse against any older person.
We were told that we were not able to go to the clinic or to the hospital. We were told that we were not able to go to the clinic or to the hospital. We were told that we were not able to go to the clinic or to the hospital. We were told that we were not able to go to the clinic or to the hospital.
Lastly, Chairperson, I want to indicate that this legislation is now being linked to the other legislation pieces that are being worked upon and led by the National Department of Justice so that there is synergy between the legislative frameworks that they're working on and the older persons are involved in. So that all our abuse cases can go through the justice system without any problems and that our older persons receive the necessary support. Thank you very much.
We were told that we were not able to go to the clinic or to the hospital. We were told that we were not able to go to the clinic or to the hospital. We were told that we were not able to go to the clinic or to the hospital. We were told that we were not able to go to the clinic or to the hospital. We were told that we were not able to go to the clinic or to the hospital. We were told that we were not able to go to the clinic or to the hospital. We were told that we were not able to go to the clinic or to the hospital.
Thank you very much. I also want to thank our older persons forum in the area. Thank you so much.
We were told that we were not able to go to the clinic or to the hospital. We were told that we were not able to go to the clinic or to the hospital.
Thank you very much. From here, I think thank you from the department for the responses. As you all know, our role as the portfolio committee in front is to do oversight and hope the government or the department are accountable. So moving from here, we will follow up in department. Before I thank you, I want to mention that as a portfolio committee, we have heard submissions and the concerns raised here today. Moving from here, this portfolio committee of different political members, political parties, will then go and sit and deliberate on the bill with all the submissions made here today. And through the submissions and our committee staff, the secretary, will then draft a report, adopt it, and take it to parliament where we are going to debate on the bill. And when we are there at the national assembly in parliament, we will then take it to the MCOP where the MCOP, which is the National Council of Provinces, which then will then continue to the legislative processes on the bill. And then thereafter, the bill will be sent to the president. Then let me take this opportunity and thank everyone here today. Thank the older persons forum.
We care for the persons forum.
Thank the department.
We care for the forum.
And thank everybody in this room today. I must say and I must applaud you. As old as you are, you managed to sit here from early in the morning until this time. Sitting here listening how committed you are in developing or taking care of other old people is really inspiring. But I must caution our old people on a few things before I sit down. There are challenges or problems that I've picked up here. Which one of them is the issue of abomashweliisa taking sasa grants? Government is assisting you with the social grant so that you manage to live, go to the shops, go buy food, have clothes, go to the clinic, move around as an elderly person. So I want to caution you that instead of going to abomashweliisa, rather save the money and leave abomashweliisa because abomashweliisa really, they will take your grants if you go to them. And we also understand, I must say, as a young person that you play a very critical role in our lives also. We have kids that you are looking after. As young people, we must thank our grandparents because we make it your own. I've got a child myself that is with my mother all the time. So that's why I'm thanking you for being there for us as young people. You are appreciated. May God bless you on that. And also thank the NPOs, NGOs, and caregivers who volunteer their time to take care of their elderly. As I close, you also spoke of gender-based violence. And you guys here experienced gender-based violence worse from your grandkids, from your kids, which is a very bad situation. The department in responding here mentioned a lot of measures that the government has put in place in fighting gender-based violence. I want to give you a number that you dial whenever you experience gender-based violence. So that you dial this number. They do answer it. They're referring to the relevant people and this number will really help you. So those that have phones, please write it down. Those that have pens, please write it down. You don't even have to go to the police station. Just call the number and then you get the assistance you need. It's zero eight hundred. Four two eight. Four two eight. Okay, I'll repeat it. It's zero two, zero eight hundred. Four two eight, four two eight. Whenever you experience or come across gender-based violence, whether it's your neighbors, whether it's your family, just dial the number and you'll be assisted. And then thank you very much for today. Chairperson is now looking at me. So thank you. Let's request Umae or Ubaaba to come in front as Valele Muntanda as well. But whilst Umaa or Ubaaba says they're not coming, indeed give us the direction. Where are we going to go or where to go?
Good afternoon, Chairperson's members. No may this afternoon I create you in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. As you are about to close the session of today. We are aware that you left your houses early in the morning. Sacrifice yourself to come here and express your views on this piece of legislation. As a carry parliament, we cannot let you go home hungry. There is a food de jo prepared for you to eat before you go home. After the prayer, you must just remain seated. There will be parliamentary officials who come and direct you where to go. May you enjoy the lunch of parliament.
We were told that we were not able to go to the clinic or to the hospital.